Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to Pensacola City Hall after some exciting July 4th celebrations in our downtown area. Particularly, the CRA saw a lot of activity, but it's good to see everyone reconvening and ready to spin the wheels of government, fellow CRA members. At this time, we must do our customary disclosure of ownership or control of interest for those of us that are CRA members, whether we are involved directly or indirectly with property ownership again or control within the CRA. And I will start with Councilman Gerald's.
I have no interest.
All right.
No, sir.
I do. I am involved. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pratt, I was just moving around.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that disclosure. We now move to action items, and that is, number one, the approval of the June 11th CRA 2012 CRA Board Meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that passes with all present members voting unanimously. The next item is the consideration of amendments to the Economic Development Agreement with Disposition of Property between the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Pensacola and Hicks Art Technologies Incorporated. We have members in, as I see and recognize, we have members in the audience that will be speaking to this particular action item. And we also have Ryan Winterberg here to provide for us a background of how we got where we are today. That sounds very technical, but I think it's important because of the duration of time that has transpired from the beginning discussions of this particular project and where we are today. I have, I am asking Ryan to provide a summary of not only the timeline, but also to provide for us some insight or descriptions of the amendments and what that may mean to our contemplated agreement. And with all due respect, I've even asked Ryan to speak exceptionally slowly compared to what sort of fast-forward speed that Ryan speaks. And so, Ryan, thank you very much. I think just make sure, please, that everyone in the audience can hear you clearly.
Okay.
And I'm now going to ask for you to give us the presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chairman, board members. And if there are any questions as I go through, feel free to stop me. We have a lot of deadlines and dates and that sort of thing, so absolutely raise a hand. So if you'll remember, on October 13th, 2011, the Pensacola City Council approved the Economic Development Agreement with Disposition of Property between the City of Pensacola and Hicks Art Technologies, Inc. And then on March 5th, 2012, this year, we approved an extension to the closing date and financing deadline submitted by Mr. Hicks of Hicks Art, his request. Those dates were amended to July 1st. And July 1st would have marked the financing deadline and closing date on the Hicks Art Economic Development Agreement. And on that financing deadline, in order to proceed with transferring the property at 120 West Government to Hicks Art, Hicks Art had to demonstrate that they had acquired sufficient financing to construct the project, which is known as the proof of financing. And in the contract that's contained within your agenda package, it defines proof of financing as evidence satisfactory to the Executive Director and Chairman of the CRA, proving that Hicks Art has acquired sufficient financing to fully construct the facility improvements provided prior to the closing date. And as proof of financing, on June 26th, Beach Community Bank submitted a letter of intent to the CRA stating their intent to fund Hicks Art's construction loan, and that letter is also included in your agenda package. So in that letter of intent, however, it did not demonstrate that the financing had already been acquired per the terms and conditions of the contract. The letter also states that there are four conditions for Beach Community Bank's funding of Hicks Art's construction loan. The first being the approval of Small Business Association 504(c) and Florida Small Business Credit Initiative Funds. The second being subordination of debt to the City of Pensacola prior to groundbreaking, and this is something that we're going to come back to later. And then final construction plans and specifications. And the fourth being land appraisal acceptable to the bank. So with these four conditions unresolved and the letter expressing intent to finance the project, the CRA Chairman Spencer concluded that the letter of intent did not fulfill the terms and conditions of the contract, and we did not proceed with the closing on 120 West Government on July 1st. So in Chairman Spencer's response letter, which is also included in your agenda package, the Chairman offered Hicks Art an informal extension to the financing deadline and closing date contingent upon formal approval by this board at the next regular meeting, which would be today, July 16th. So he was clear to indicate that only the full CRA board has the power to approve that amended financing deadline and closing date. But given the complexity of Hicks Art's financial package, this would allow some additional time for Hicks Art to demonstrate proof of financing to meet the terms of the contract, and then we could proceed with conveyance. So with the informal extension, Hicks Art has submitted an official amendment to the financing deadline and closing date, which would be January 1st, 2013. And that's something that I emailed out to you this morning and also updated the agenda. So one of the conditions in Beach Community Bank's willingness to issue the construction loan to Hicks Art, it's important for this body to consider the request or the interest in subordination of our CRA mortgage in favor of the construction loan. And in case anyone is unfamiliar with the process of subordination, anytime that debt is subordinated like a mortgage, it takes a lesser rank to the primary debt holder or mortgage when it comes to assets and securities. So in the event of default, for example, the creditor with the highest rank of debt would take payment of any assets in the event of default, and the subordinated debt would take a lesser payment if anything were remaining. So really, it's kind of a discussion of a tolerance of risk when subordinating. So the terms of the contract, the CRA board is also the only entity that can approve the subordination after a written request is jointly submitted by Hicks Art and Beach Community Bank, which is something they have not done yet. We're just really interested in kind of gauging the interest in that before they proceed with a formal request. So for today's discussion, there are two interconnected issues. The first being the extension of the financing deadline and the closing date to allow for additional time for Hicks Art to establish their financing package, and then we would proceed with conveyance on July 1, 2013, if approved. And then the second being subordination of the CRA mortgage in favor of the construction loan to Beach Community Bank. So the inclination towards the subordination should be part of the discussion today as it'll kind of frame our future discussion. So Mike Hicks, the CEO of Hicks Art, is here to offer a presentation, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. So would you like to entertain questions now or proceed with presentation?
At this time, I want to, I will invite Mr. Hicks to certainly make the presentation. I want fellow CRA members to know that in addition to Mr. Hicks, we have other project representatives here that will be, that I will make available to answer your questions. And we have Mr. Brian Bell from Beach Community Bank, and in addition...
Kelly Reiser from the Greater Pensacola Chamber.
Right. We have the Greater Pensacola Chamber representative as well, and of course, Mr. Hicks of Hicks Art Technologies. And fellow CRA members, I want to point out, I think, Ryan, you did an excellent job basically crystallizing that the purpose of our meeting today is really to discuss the feasibility, get a temperature reading, I should say, on our feeling about an extension of the deadlines, and then also some additional issues and terms, as Ryan described. Most importantly or most notably, the subordination issue that has surfaced. So it was not, and I'll point out, the January 3 publication by the Pensacola News Journal may have certainly characterized this particular noteworthy project by one of our local businessmen who served in the armed services as a hitting a roadblock. Well, I hope that my letter felt more like a speed bump when others read it. Certainly, it was my intent as CRA Chair at that time was to extend basically or to help construct a bridge from that point in time to where we are today, where we may act in the open, in a publicly advertised meeting, and have this discussion about Mr. Hicks Art and what we had intended to do in the disposition of, excuse me, Mr. Hicks, in providing the land to help his business grow. So, Mr. Hicks, I just gave us notification, I'd say within the last 30 minutes, that you would like to present, so please understand that that is, we're extending you that opportunity. And other members, including staff, may not have been fully prepared, so I hope you will understand that I'm asking you to keep this presentation brief.
Yes. Okay. Go ahead.
And tell us if you want lighting adjusted.
It's fine. You can see it up there. One of the things I wanted to do is kind of go over an overview of the actual project just real quick.
And use the microphone, please.
Since it's been a little while. But Project Press is a $6 million economic development deal between Hicks Art and the City of Pensacola, really, to build a 40,000-square-foot building and create 100 new jobs in exchange for the city-owned parking lot to actually build on. The actual building itself has gone through, when we, the last time we extended was to change the building to move it from a 30,000-square-foot building to a 40,000-square-foot building, and it's gone through a number of changes in the actual design itself to actually accommodate that. One of the things that I wanted to do was kind of just go through and just touch base so everybody understood what's in the building and how the building is kind of laid out. Go to the next slide. So this is the model itself of the actual building and what the building looks like when it's actually sitting on the actual lot itself, how the building actually lines up on the site. You can see to the right, Gulf Winds there. To the left is St. Joseph's and the St. Joseph's parking lot. And then to the north of the building is the current Hicks Art building. So the first floor of the building, it, you know, the first floor of the building has, does have some space there in the front for a retail area, which we're trying to bring in a coffee shop. The backside of the building is the only other point that touches the ground on the building, and that's actually going to be a training center for Hicks Art. Floors 2 and 3 are basically the same. It's just office space with, it's just office space. Nothing significant. On floor 2 is where the Hicks Art companies, there's some other companies that are Hicks Art companies or Hicks Art partners that actually will occupy the actual second floor. Go to the next floor. The fourth floor is where our Network Operations Center. Now, this is a very large network operations center. One of the projects that we're actually doing is going to push Hicks Art to the extent of actually providing more of a national service. The Chamber recently saw part of the new service rollout for them and the virtualization of desktops and that type of thing. But the new services will actually be leveraged from Hicks Art's new network operations center here in Pensacola. And then the very last top floor is the executive offices, executive spaces, application development guys, those type of things. But it's a complete Hicks Art building. Hicks Art is going to occupy the entire building. That's our intention.
So that's a clarification from what was stated when the News Journal interviewed you.
Correct.
All right.
So, actually, the News Journal made that assumption themselves. I don't know where they got that information from. So these are the projects. This is how the projects are actually laid out. Project Press is this project, and behind it is our project Valor. It's already, since we signed the contract in October, it's already created 13 of the 100 jobs that we have to create over the next, over the next five years. That's tied to this city economic development deal. The next project is Project Air. This is a project that we're working here. This project will actually award in July, on July the 23rd of this month. It's going to create 40 jobs. And then the last one is Project Ace. And Project Ace is not assigned, one of the things that Hicks Art looks for is, we try to tie the deals to economic development deals incentives as we create these jobs. But this will create another 80 jobs here in the local area next year. So we're looking at almost, over the next five years, that we're going to bring in and create almost 220 jobs here in Pensacola, Florida. Okay? So the thing about it is that, and why I wanted to highlight this, is that this original deal, and even the financing and the economic development deals are all tied to these job creations. On the first two projects, we've already got the letter of intent to actually award the projects. The third project, we're still waiting on. The way it used to work in the banking world, once you had the letter of intent to actually award, and even though you didn't have the final contract, you could actually finance on that. It doesn't work that way in the banking world anymore. They want to actually see the actual contract. The first contract that will actually come through will be Project Air. The next one will be actually Project Valor. For us, and what this means is that where we're at is that we're going to be creating jobs, and our biggest problem is going to be finding the people, because these are specialized, these are specialized field-type jobs that we have to, that we're creating. Finding the people and then placing them, because we got, for Project Air, we've already picked out, it'll be, people will be spread across three sites. We're doing this because we want those jobs here in Pensacola. For instance, Project Valor, those jobs, it would make more sense to put those jobs in Washington, D.C., all 100 of them. And to actually have, I'd actually make more money if they were there in Washington, D.C., and it would actually be easier for us to create them there in Washington, D.C. Our thing is, tied to an economic development deal here in Pensacola, and bring those jobs here. Project Air, same thing. Central Alabama is where the work will actually be performed. It's easier to actually create the work where the people, create the jobs where the people will be doing the work, but we're going to bring those jobs here also. My goal was to actually bring as many of these jobs as possible to Pensacola, and then to bring them to Pensacola, will be spread out amongst buildings in the community, and then ultimately, once our building is done, to consolidate all those jobs in one facility. Next. So the day's situation is exactly what Ryan stated. It's the same thing. The intent is to finance the project here in Pensacola with a local bank, and these are the things that we're actually working through, which is exactly what she stated. And then our request was to extend the closing date to January 1st, 2013, to work through the subordination, the land appraisals with the issue with the bank, and then any changes that need to be made for SBA and for the bank, for the modifications to the agreement. That's it. Any questions? Any questions you guys may have?
Any questions now for Mr. Hicks? Yes. Councilman Wu.
First question, have you lost a lot of weight?
I lost 200 pounds in the last nine months.
When you stood up, I said, "This isn't the same person that was here last time." I said, "You've sent a substitute." But you look wonderful.
All right, Councilman Wu, now for the next not-quite-so-obvious question.
Frankly, for you, I'm having some problems because of the continually problem with the funding. I'm having some problem because we've been engaged in this in a while, and I'm only hearing a gain, net gain of five jobs.
Oh, no. Net gain of 13 jobs.
13 jobs. And I'm also hearing that there's a possibility, if the last grant doesn't come through, that's, I think it was 80 of them, tied to the last one.
But those aren't assigned to this project. The first two, the first two are what's assigned, the first one is what's assigned to this project, and that's the one that will create the 100 jobs for this project. And we've already got the letter of intent to award on that project.
Okay. Well, all I have to say is that I have some degree of discomfort. I don't know how great it is, but I'd like to hear what my fellow councilpeople say. But I just wanted to let you know how I felt.
Yes, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I too have some reservations about the subordination of debt to the City of Pensacola coming in a second position. I'm just not sure I feel comfortable with that, putting our citizens in a second position behind this first mortgage. So I'm wondering, is that a deal killer?
The way that we're doing the financing is through an SBA 504(c) loan. Okay? So the city would ultimately have a third position. The bank would have the first, SBA would have the second, and the city would have the third. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. It's what's required, because the current loan that we have on our current piece of property, all of them merge together as part of this project. So the entire, the entire piece of property becomes one deal for us as we do this. And when we do that, that means we're going to change it from the 504(c) that it is to a new 504(c) loan.
Okay. So you're going to merge, explain that, run that by me one more time. You've got several pieces of property you're going to merge with the piece of...
So we have, the current piece of property sits on the south side of our current piece of property.
Okay.
The city-owned parking lot is on the south side of our current piece of property.
Okay.
Only by combining the two pieces of property do we get the space that's required for parking, the building, et cetera. Without the two pieces of property, there isn't enough space to build what we're trying to do.
Got that part. I'm just trying to wrap my arms around how we're going to do that with the agreement we have. I'm trying to think through that. Let me think through that a little bit. I don't have a terrible problem with extending it to January 1. I understand the lending environment that we find ourselves in today, but I'm just not sure about the subordination part, and also would like to hear from other councilpeople. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions I have. The SBA funds, what kind of timeline are those, would those take? I mean, just out of curiosity.
Typically, the SBA's come back, it's the same position that the actual bank has, right? So we kind of hit a roadblock. Until we have something written in subordination in the contract, then there's not really any wiggle room for us to move forward. Typical timeline, I would say, three months, you know, is what I think. But, you know, that was, that was based on my last deal that I did when the economy wasn't where it is today.
Okay. Second, if we make this extension, that won't be extending the, we have the, it's in the contract, you know, certain goals for employees, right? So we wouldn't be extending those, is that correct?
So the way that the contract is written, there are only two hard dates that are actually in the contract, the closing date and the actual finance date. The other dates are actually dates based on those two dates, and the way that they're written is that six months from, or one year from, or five years from, they are from those two dates.
Everything is pegged to the closing and financing deadline.
Okay. Because, yeah, I think that it's one of those things that maybe we would want to consider if we're extending this, possibly pulling some of those up, in the sense that you've had some time, and you said you've already gotten 13 people. You've had time to start doing your job searches, getting all of that in place, and pull those up closer to the closing financing deadlines. I'm not sure. And I guess on the subordination, I know that was something that was a concern all along, that, you know, how do you do that? But, you know, I think we all understand that no bank is going to give you millions of dollars and let the city be the one who wins the building because we owned a piece of asphalt, you know? And so in the contract, as I read it, it said that subordination can't be unreasonably withheld. And so, I mean, I think, based on the terms of that contract, we sort of knew going in that we were probably going to be asked to subordinate, and so I think that, yeah, we still need to review it as we do it, but I think we have to be very open to that according to what we've already agreed to in the past. Thank you.
One of the things you mentioned, Councilwoman Pratt, is that on the dates for the people creation, for employee creation, from the original contract dates, you know, even prior to the first extension, the first 25 people in the contract didn't need to be hired until the first two years into the contract. We would have actually, well, based on where we're at today, by the end of the year, we will have more than 50 people hired, which means we'll have more than 50% of the people hired well within the first year of the contract, of the original date timeframe for the contract.
Any other questions before I offer my questions and comments? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is a way to do this, and I think what we really need to do is find out specifically what we feel the letter of intent is liking in terms of the financing. I think the jobs and all of those kinds of things will come about once we can get a clarification on just what our expectations are. It appears to be somewhat clouded as to what they are. That subordination issue, as Councilwoman Pratt indicated, that is an issue that we are going to have to face, and it's not overwhelming to the extent that there is some expectation that when you get that kind of money, some folks will want to be in a better position to ensure that they're going to be able to recoup their losses if it comes about. So I think, inasmuch, we made a determination that the letter of intent was insufficient and does not satisfy our desires. We need to cite specifically just what they are and see whether the bank, Mr. Hicks, and whatever, that we can negotiate and get those things right.
Thank you. Councilman Townsend. Well, I'd like to make a few comments and ask questions. Perhaps Mr. Bell will have to chime in. Please understand that as this last date, this deadline was occurring, there was basically a confluence of parties with, all with their individual requirements, that if one party dropped the ball, so to speak, there would be a blank, that they could look at one another as with this mutual participation, most particularly with SBA funding, that in my mind, did not provide the city evidence of proof of financing. It was plain and simple. Certainly, the letter of intent listed the caveats that needed to be met, could be met, but at that point in time, at that deadline, it was not there for me as Chair to be able to confidently say we had proof of financing. Therefore, we were poised to absorb or accept a tremendous amount of exposure in the form of moving forward with a closing without proof of financing. If, in fact, that train did not move forward as we all had hoped, then the city would be, we would be facing the uncomfortable requirement, and that would be to foreclose on the property in order to pull that property back into our portfolio for a subsequent discussion, perhaps with another party. So that decision was, while it may have appeared to be less than sympathetic, it was not at all, that was not the intent. It was a very objective business decision as we have to sometimes make to make sure we are protecting ourselves, so protecting the taxpayers. With that, I want to ask the following questions. Okay, regarding the... Okay, regarding the necessity to have a full project budget, construction budget, are the, one thing that was lacking at that point, as I understand, was a full set of construction documents, biddable documents, where Mr. Hicks and his financial partners, that being Beach Community Bank and those representing the SBA, they knew that they had a buildable project given the financing that they were providing. So Mr. Hicks or Mr. Bell, as we are contemplating pushing back the deadline, what are the requirements regarding biddable, a biddable set of construction documents? And that's for your lender? I guess.
That might be.
They can come together. It doesn't matter, but.
Thank you, Brian. I'm Carter Kena. I'm on the architectural team that's been working with Mike, and we do not have full sets of construction documents. A lot of the cost analysis that we've done to date has been based on typical data, historical data, other projects. And I'm not sure if that meets Brian's conditions or not, but the numbers are conservative.
Mr. Bell, is that going to be a term, or a condition, I should say, one of the conditions that is required by you as a, your bank as a lending source? And that is, is the set of documents with qualified bids from qualified construction companies indicating that the project will cost X amount of dollars given this location?
It would be prudent for any development to have those in place prior to closing of the loan. I'm not sure the, what the intent, where we're, of the question.
For the construction loan?
Right. It would have to have a clear budget to understand what the cost of the development would be before you could, what are you going to base your numbers off of unless you have those numbers?
Do you have enough right now?
I do not have the information right now.
Okay. Would you expect more information in order to issue a letter of proof of financing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I guess, you know, you're looking at me with a puzzled, puzzled look. Maybe, Carter, you can respond. But we've got to, I'm actually trying to do some of your housekeeping.
Yes, thank you. I'd love to.
In a public arena.
Typically, on a project like this, you would do preliminary drawings, and that's what you've seen the results of. Those have been shared with contractors and subcontractors that are interested to do it in order to create a budget. But you're absolutely right. Until a complete set of construction documents are done, and then we have lined up our general contractor and all the subcontracts, knowing, for example, what is under the ground and what is the foundation cost. That's one of the big ifs. Most of the stuff above ground, we're pretty close on. My understanding is we, our schedule was to start on that in October. We were given the green light to move to the construction document phase. If this delay in the closing would affect that budget, I'm not exactly sure. But my understanding with Mike is we've been going along with him according to his plan. I've been keeping, he's been keeping me familiar with when these new contracts come, this not only creates jobs for him, it also creates cash flow for him. And I think that's been the way we've been trying to partner on this deal. If that's a requirement of the construction loan, yes. Is it a requirement of the closing on the property purchase? I think that's a different question. I'm not sure if that's the question you're answering, asking or not.
So back to where the city stands in terms of exposure. As I understand, we're referencing Councilman Johnson's inquiry. We're third in line then in terms of, the subordination actually puts us behind Beach Community Bank, that contemplated subordination, behind Beach Community Bank, behind SBA. And so I would offer for your consideration that I think we have a responsibility to consider what would be, what might be necessary for us to protect ourselves should we need to, whether or not that subordination certainly is ordinary, but I think we should consider what cost may we be exposed to if, in fact, the project doesn't move forward post-closing and we are in a third-place position. Are there, and maybe our attorney, Mr. Messer, can comment on that, is there a way to estimate and escrow some sort, or create a document that protects us in which Mr. Hicks would be responsible for costs associated with any re-acquisition or foreclosure on the land to put it back into our ownership, free and clear?
Sure. If you're asking me if there's a way to protect the city if we stand third in line, subordinate to the first two lenders in the document, protecting us, I'm not quite sure what you mean. But in terms of taking back the property, the answer is no. In terms of any expenses or costs we accrue, of course, if Mr. Hicks wants to enter some type of agreement with us, we could create an agreement that would pay us back for any costs of litigation or foreclosure, if that's sort of what you were headed for. But really and truly, for the amount of money involved and the property involved, we're not going to be able to foreclose because we're going to have two lenders ahead of us that are going to, they're like Pac-Man, they're going to eat everything up. So I would hearken back to what Ryan said. It depends on the tolerance for risk. I mean, that's what really this is all about. What is your tolerance for risk? Because there's no way to protect yourself in a classic sense.
All right. Yes, Ryan?
And if I may, the section in the economic development agreement, section four, if you've got your agendas with you, when it comes to the official subordination request that would be submitted jointly by Hicksart and Beach, there's a number of documents that they would need to supply along with the official request. It's on page six of your agreement. Hicksart and lender must jointly submit to CRA a written subordination request, which includes a description of the proposed improvements with detailed construction plans, an estimate of the cost of improvements, the proposed dates of commencement and completion of construction, the contact information of the lender, the contact information of the loan officer handling the transaction, a draft of the proposed subordination agreement, excuse me, the total cost of financing, and any other information that is reasonably necessary for CRA to determine whether to subordinate the mortgage. So based upon this body's inclination, that's something that they could submit later along with that documentation.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Myers.
Well, I don't know how my tolerance for risk is. I think, though, that I don't know what the risk is, how high the risk is, just by extending these dates here. But what I hear Ryan saying is that the issue of subordination will come back before the CRA for us to approve it. So at this time, if subordination is the biggest risk, and I don't know, I'm not a real estate attorney, but we don't have to, we're not facing that risk right now. We can still address that even though we give these extensions. That doesn't mean that we are accepting the risk. I think that in terms of subordination, there are certain things that have to be accomplished that would make us feel comfortable in terms of a subordination. So we still have an opportunity to really look at that and decide if that's something we want to do. That's my understanding. Maybe I'm understanding it in a limited way, but am I getting the correct picture?
It's my opinion that you are.
Thank you.
That we are having this, the subordination discussion currently is occurring in, basically in the sunshine where otherwise we would not be able to make this progress, knowing that, I mean, we, everyone now has been brought up to speed in what position the city will be in, should we grant a subordination. And I wanted to make sure that I went ahead and brought to the surface that in the, one of the conditions of our subordination agreement is the provision of the detailed construction plans with qualified budget. And at the risk of sounding like I'm trying to, even though he's not paying attention right now, but Mr. Carter Kena, at the risk of sounding like I'm trying to pad the coffers of a fellow professional in the design profession, I think it's important because this discussion is going to come up again. I am encouraging you, Mr. Hicks, to actually, to fund some efforts that provide much, a greater level of qualified information about your proposed project. We, sitting on the CRA, have several conditions that we have to balance and weigh regarding our willingness or understanding of this particular subordination position. That's just one of them. And so I wouldn't postpone it so that we're sitting here, months from now, listening to you all show us and describe the same diagrammatic drawings that are certainly evocative, they're stirring. I want to see this as part of the downtown skyline, but we've got to see, we've got to see if it's feasible so that we aren't disproportionately, perhaps moved, by drawings that have not yet reached a level of being vetted in the construction, in the construction world. And obviously, that's immediately where I move. Yes?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for bringing this issue up because it does greatly concern me. But how are we going to know, I mean, you obviously have a lot of expertise in this area because this is what you do for a living, but how are we, when they come back to us, how are we going to know that they've done what they're supposed to do to ensure that we can feel comfortable with allowing this subordination? I mean, who's going to give us the advice on that? Is there anybody on staff? Do we look to Mr. Messer? Who do we look to? Besides you, of course.
Well, there would be, I assume that there would be other qualified individuals in the construction industry, for example, that would be invited to provide their representations that, or there would, there could easily be documentation that Mr. Kena could provide on behalf of Mr. Hicks, that people in the construction industry, respected peers, that this project is in no way out of their typical scope of work or history, that they have, I mean, there are documents, estimating documents.
Okay, well, I would.
And again, that's just one piece, but I think it's a significant piece. Yes, Councilwoman Pratt?
And I was going to touch on that just briefly, that I think part of it is, you know, part of the reason for that caveat in the documents is we've been told, okay, we think we can build this big of a building for this amount of money, and that's what we all now think we're getting when we hand over this parcel. But it could be that once they get real numbers, the price of steel tripled, and suddenly they can only build a two-story building, or, you know, it's going to look dumpy or something like that. And I think that once it sort of goes through the construction documents, getting the bids, and I think the bank will be part of that, you know, just vetting that, I think we will then know that we will be able to get what we thought we were going to get when we hand over the parcel. I think that's, part of that caveat in there as well.
All right, Councilman Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, if we're in line for a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the extension to January, which I think that was the request. And then we'll make a determination whether all of the eyes and all of the other things that are required are there for us to vote on this project or not vote on this project.
Is that a motion?
I'll second it. That was a motion.
Yeah, I wanted to know if that was his motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, Councilwoman DeWes.
I have to abstain from voting on this matter. I just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This discussion takes me back quite a few years when I served on the PEDC. And in fact, that's where I met Mr. Hicks. And we've been talking about this project and making plans for it. It has a lot of promise, I believe, for the city of Pensacola. But as I listened to Mr. Kena, and I believe it was Mr. Bell or Butler, and it appears that there are some things that Mr. Smith needs additional time to get done. I do understand that the subordination will come back to us for consideration, but I certainly support Mr. Townsend's motion that we allow this project the time it needs to get the house in order. And I like saying that. I have to refer to things as getting the house in order so that the things that appear to be missing at this point, and I believe that it gives us an opportunity to sort of get the horse before the cart. And I too, Mr. Chairman, would like to thank you for bringing this up because there was quite a bit about it that needed clarification. And it needs clarification, which this discussion today obviously has opened the eyes of many of us. But to give the project additional time, I don't feel would be a reckless decision. I think it's something that we need to move forward with if we are going to continue our efforts to rebuild and build the city of Pensacola and to move forward and become more technologically involved. I think the project itself has a lot of promise, and as I indicated, I will support the motion to move forward and grant them the additional time that's needed.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Gerald. I saw Councilman Hall. And after that, I'll recognize Councilwoman Pratt. Thank you.
Well, I certainly don't have any problem with voting for an extension date. It's not like anybody's beating down our door to go develop that property over there. And I think it's, Mr. Tessier pointed out to me, I think it was something like 60 acres of government-owned land in the CRA that's not being utilized, whether it's ECUA, school board, city, or county. And so the extension is an easy one for me to support. What I'm trying to do is look ahead to January and see what my position would be on that subordination. And whether we do it January 1st, 2013, or 2014, I'm just, I don't want to give the board members here or Mr. Hicks, you know, any false hope that I'm going to be jumping in line to subordinate the city to that type of debt.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll support the motion. And, but I would like for Ms. Winterberg to provide us at some point sort of a listing of what our, what the timeframe of the other parts are. some point, sort of a listing of what our, what the timeframe of the other parts are, and if we would like to consider if there might be ways to advance anything, because, you know, this is, this will put us approximately nine months behind the original schedule, and maybe there would be consideration. When the subordination comes up, we might consider that as well, changing the timeframe. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? Yes, Councilman Wu, and then we'll recognize audience members.
I am going to vote no, and I may be the only person on council that's going to do so. And I wanted to explain my vote. To me, I see the vote today and subordination related. If you're going to kick a can down the road, only to squash it later, does it make any I can tell you right now, before we go any further, I am not in favor of subordination with the loan. I'm not going to put the city in that type of position. So, am I doing anything to help anybody? If I say, okay, I'm all right for it for three months, and in three months, or whatever the time comes back, I sit here and say, well, no, I'm not going to vote for subordination, and therefore, it's not able to go on. So, to me, it's being more frank to say that now, because that's how I feel, and, but I don't say it happily, because I really would like to see your project work. I know you have a lot of time and effort in it, and I believe that you have votes to make a go. But I think I'd be less than Canada if I didn't share those feelings with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, this will be the last time I recognize a council, I mean, a CRA member.
Hall, yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Hall.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chairman, if you have no objection, I'd like to ask Mr. Hicks a question. Something Dr. Wu said may have convinced me to change my position on that extension. So, if I may.
Yes, please do.
Mr. Hicks, when you come, if the extension is granted today, will there be any chance, when you come back in January, with your plans, without the city having to be on the hook for this? Or is that going to be a condition of moving this project forward? Because I don't, if all we're doing is, Dr. Wu said, kicking the can down the road, I don't want to be a part of that today.
Right. I think that, even if the bank doesn't, I think it'll be a requirement of SBA, unless we actually did this as some other type of deal, which would, which would complicate things significantly.
Okay.
I think that the SBA would still take, you know, if the bank didn't take the first position, and we could convince them to take the third, I think, I don't think the SBA would go for that.
Okay, well, I, then I regret to have to say this to you, but I'm not going to be able to support it today, then. Thank you.
All right. Yes.
Dottie Devison, a citizen of Pensacola, I just want to ask council to review what your economic development organization is about. If, in fact, we're going to try to encourage businesses to come down and build and say, come into partnership with us, we are going to be subordinating ourselves at some level. If Mr. Hicks could have outright bought from the city, and turned around and developed this, we wouldn't be putting this deal together. The whole situation was predicated on the fact that this would put a piece of land that could not by itself probably develop the kind of building that will be developed. It was a small parking lot. His property is adjacent, so we are combining two pieces of downtown property into one multi-level building. Without this project going through, we're going to have a parking lot and a small building. And as I understand it, about 200 jobs total over the next few years, that will not be here, they'll be in Washington, and they'll be in Alabama, and they'll be wherever. Mr. Hicks has put himself at risk in talking to the SBA and to his national contractors, saying, I want to move my jobs here. When he put in his proposals, he was saying, I'm going to bring those jobs to Pensacola. So, if by being afraid to subordinate the city to this thing, you're saying, you know, we're not going to subordinate, get prepared, because downstairs, you have a group trying to figure out how to get you to give the land and subordinate every project that's coming up. Mr. Hicks has put together a deal where you will be repaid, and you are going to have a certain number of jobs guaranteed, not a wish if people will come to shop, or will come to buy, or will come to look at, or will come to convene, but that there are jobs that will be here as a result of us building this building, according to plans that a bank, a local bank, is going to be reviewing and saying, we find it to be a building worth building, and which a local architect, who takes a lot of pride in our community, will be saying, this is what I will proudly put forward to the city. I understand the games that everyone plays and saying, oh, semantics-wise, I can't do it this way, but I'm asking you all to look at, what is the point of the CRA in economic development, if not to bring good construction and good valid jobs to Pensacola? Please consider what you're actually doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devison. All right, we have another audience member.
I'd just like to second what Ms. Devison said. We just gave money for the Penn App Credit Union to get parking spaces. Their job pay is nowhere near what these job pays are going to be. We talk about 200 people making 30, 40, 50, 60,000, $100,000 a year. That is a tremendous amount of income to Pensacola and Escambia County. We're talking about a parking lot that we don't hardly use. Come on, let's get real. Let's forget about whether we're in third place, second place, or third place. We need to bring quality jobs for our young kids and young people graduating from school to have an opportunity to stay in Pensacola. That's what you need to look for. Forget about third place. Think about jobs and opportunities for your kids and grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two other audience members, and speaking to the, we've got a motion and a second. I'll call on Tony.
Yes, the CRA members, Mr. Hicks. Just wanted to echo a little bit of what the other two speakers said. We've got a local bank that's agreed to do the deal, SBA 504 is in the mix, and we're asking the city to put up land. Let's also look at the fact that this is a disabled veteran-owned business. Now, all over the country, now, there are new programs that are being developed to provide incentives for disabled veteran-owned businesses to ratchet up their economic development opportunity, their business development opportunities, job creation. We've got job creation here, we got, a business owner is actually talking about bringing 200 jobs, which, in some cases, families will be moving here. It really seems to me that a lot of the goals that the city has set, in terms of this new administration, are moving forward with economic development. And this opportunity is being offered in the time of economic distress throughout the country. So, it's really amazing that Mike has even been able to pull something like this together. So, I would like to urge you, from a standpoint of being a member of the Pensacola Chamber, and being a business owner that's really in touch with a lot of development programs going on in the country, the more time you give it, the more incentives may be able to be pulled together. So, I hope that those that are thinking about voting negative will consider changing their vote. Thank you.
Thank you. One more from the audience.
I find myself in an interesting position. I support Councilman Wu and Councilman Hall's position, and my reason is this. What I see this as an example of what's going on in many places in our country, where we see a tendency towards a, what I will call, corporate socialism. That is, where corporate entities capture profit, but they move the risk and the cost and the downside to the public, to the city of, in this case, the city of Pensacola. And I think this is a very dangerous trend, and I don't want to see that continued. So, I believe that the subordination is a bad idea. I feel that if corporations are going to make money, that they need to assume all of the risk. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to just make one comment before I call for a vote. My comment is, I'm reminding everyone that we, as the CRA board, we are the only entity that has the right to grant the extension, that is basically what we are, we are being asked to do today. So, what we have is a motion that is seeking, that is referencing an extension. That's the only issue that we are voting on. I encourage fellow members at this time, especially listening to some of the comments from the audience, to do their homework. I'm going to do mine, as it relates to looking at economic redevelopment. In today's world, I want to encourage you to do the same, and that is, what are other municipalities doing in the context of subordination? And what, again, I just, I encourage all of us, because we have the time to do our homework. So, before, some of you have, basically, you've stated you've made up your mind, but perhaps there are some opportunities to get educated about subordination, again, in today's climate. Yes, this is it, and then I'm going to call for a vote.
I just want to point out, as we've discussed, subordination, that really, it only comes into play if the building is foreclosed upon. And so, Mr. Hicks, we have faith in his business plan, and that he will be able to sustain his building. And if not, in the end, we will end up with a asset in our downtown. So, I think that, you know, I hope that we can get to the subordination question later, and do our homework, as the chairman said, but I do hope that we can grant this extension. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And at this time, I am going to take the liberty to state the motion in a little bit greater detail, for the record, and that is, the motion that is before us is to extend, or to provide an extension, and that is, will affect Section 1 of our agreement to be amended, to read as follows, and that is, that our closing date occur on January 1, 2013, and at that date, the CRA would convey the property to Hickson for development pursuant to the terms and conditions of the agreement as submitted, previously submitted. In addition, this motion would provide for an amendment to the financing deadline as well, with that reading, that the date would occur on January 1, 2013, upon which Hickson shall provide the CRA with proof of financing. The remaining provisions of the agreement would remain in full force and effect, and not be affected by this, this extension. All those, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, I'm going to call for raising of the hands on this. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, I'm asking Ryan to record the voting results, and those opposed, please raise your hand. All right, Ryan, did you get that? Thank you. And one final comment is, Mr. Hicks, thank you for coming here personally today, and may I encourage you, because you are successful and your company is growing, and that because the livelihood of your company demands your attention, that may be diverted away from project development, I highly encourage you to reach out, perhaps, into the business community, perhaps Mr. Kena can help, but at this point, I think you're really moving in the direction where you could anoint someone with the responsibility and task of being your project director. And I think that would provide a win-win for all parties here. You could continue to grow Hickson Technologies like we want you to, and provide timely information as we come closer to this January 1 date. All right. Next on our agenda is, on the discussion item, we have one item listed, and that is 16 Palafox Place lease amendments. Ryan?
Thank you, Chairman. So, now, we're going to switch gears a little bit, and you're going to take on your CRA board role as landlord. So, the two tenants at 16 South Palafox Place, the Wine Bar on the first floor, and Play on the second floor, had expressed interest in selling items not originally specified in their leases. Wine Bar specifically is interested in serving mixed drinks, and their lease currently only allows them to sell and serve wine, not hard alcohol or liquor. So, the word alcohol would essentially need to be included in their lease language. Play has actually rescinded their request, so they've asked me not to include it in the discussion today. And as you're familiar with, the CRA leases, they're very specific. They list items to be sold, activities, so they're, they're something that's very tightly constrained. So, we would be in the position to amend that actual lease language, to allow our first-floor tenant, the Wine Bar, to serve mixed drinks. And in, as my role as CRA administrator, I don't have the power myself to amend the language, so it would be a board decision. And in your agenda package, you'll see that CRA Chairman Spencer requested a history of the CRA's involvement in the property and our expenditures to date, and Board Member Johnson requested an analysis of the two tenants' lease terms, their rents specifically, as compared to other comparable market rates. And there's just a little point of clarity in the agenda package. It does say that the Wine Bar pays $7.37 per square foot in rent, but that's really an aggregate number. That includes some of their outdoor lease areas, as well as their indoor. So, their indoor, internal lease rate is about $10.04 per square foot. So, in terms of the process that would follow, if you wanted this to become an action item at a later date, the CRA board would authorize the mayor to amend the lease agreement, the language itself, and then re-execute the agreement. And the item today is just a discussion, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the lease terms, the language, or the process.
All right. I'll, you know what, on this particular item, as a discussion item, I'm going to work around the, around the table. Councilwoman DeWes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just wanted clarification on the open area, the Breezeway Walkway, it's a rather large area. And it may be going back to when we originally discussed this, when Mr. Cohen had presented, when the property was up for sale, and then because of the market, we chose, as a council, to hold on to it and rent it. And that that was going to be offered as a license-to-use space, is what I understood, and I just would like clarification on that, if there's any research been done on what was originally offered to the tenant, because they have been such a good tenant, and I wouldn't want to create a situation there. And the rent situation, with it being $7, if that was originally a license-to-use, then that's really not a factor, that the actual rent they're paying is the $10. So, I just would like clarification on that area, please.
All right. Thank you. Ryan, go ahead.
The Breezeway area, it's about 700 square feet, and that is actually included within their lease. They then have a license to use the right-of-way for the strip of the building adjacent to their frontage on Palafox. Yeah, so that's the license to use the right-of-way, the Breezeway itself is part of the lease. So, and that, that's included in that aggregate, $7.37. What they pay interior is $10, and I think their exterior is around $4 or something, so that's why the average is skewed.
All right. Answers your question. Next, I'm moving just around the, around the table. All right, Mr. Hall, Councilman Hall?
Yeah, thank you. You know, if the lease were up now, and we were having to negotiate a new lease, I think, you know, the price of being charged per square foot is fair game. What the tenant is looking to do is a small change in the lease, and I know when I talked to Ryan last week about this, you know, she said the language is very, very specific. And she read it to me aloud over the phone, and then, and then sent it to me by email, and she was recommending putting the word whiskey in there, which is, makes it even more specific.
Alcohol, just alcohol.
Alcohol, okay.
Just alcohol. Just alcohol.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and well, good, I'm glad that's now been made clear, because my view is that, you know, you move to a more generic term, you know, and because the way it is now, I guess if the owners wanted to have a mullet fry down there, that that might not be possible because of the specificity of the language there, the types of food that they have to do. When I talked to the owner last week, it's not like it's going to be a barfatorium down there, you know, it's where you're serving young kids, all kinds of mixed drinks. It would be at the high end, I mean, even really above the top-shelf stuff, the stuff that's kept in the back room, you know, that's way out of my market, I think. But, at the risk of getting yelled at, talking about my own personal habits, I'll just move on. But anyway, they've been a successful business, been a good tenant down there, and I don't think we should be punishing success right in the middle of the contract negotiations. And Class Act down there, I can think of three businesses down there on Palafox that come to that level, Wine Bar, Global Crossing, and Jackson's. And so, I wouldn't support an increase in rent.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I hope I wasn't implying that we were going to try to go up on the rent or anything, but I thought it was an opportunity. When we have a tenant come to us, the CRA, and they ask for us to look at an issue within their lease, to me, it gives an opportunity maybe to look at the entire lease again, but as Ms. Meyer has reminded us, she's not a real estate attorney, nor am I. But, you know, I have, I enjoy the Wine Bar very much, go down there about every week, actually, and enjoy that establishment much, and am very happy and support their success there. I'll remind everybody that that building was dark, I think, from the hurricane until they stepped up and opened the business there. So, I want to make sure that everyone understands that I'm business-friendly and appreciate the great job they're doing down there and the, what they've added there to downtown. But, you know, repeatedly, it's been brought to my attention that there's, some in the community, it feels like that there was a, you know, a very low rent per square foot granted to this establishment, and it makes, you know, with other businesses, surrounding businesses come to me and say, you know, it's hard to compete when someone's getting their per-square-foot cost is quite a bit lower than ours. I think this gave us kind of an opportunity to take a look at that. I still think it's kind of low. I'm not suggesting or proposing that we go up on their lease, but I did think it was an interesting, an issue to take a look at what they're actually paying at this point. I think I brought this up three years ago when this came before us, that I felt that the lease per square foot was extremely fair. But, you know, I'm going to support this today. I had a conversation yesterday with Mr. Gunther, who represents them, and I've got more of a comfort level. Again, I think that they're getting a real good deal here, and I'm not suggesting at all that we open up the conversation to increase their lease. I just want to be, make clear, but again, I just want to keep establishing in my mind, if I think the taxpayers and the CRA is getting a fair deal. So, that's where I was kind of going. I think later, we have a restaurant that's going up on South Palafox, and I believe that restaurant's paying, I don't want to say double, but quite a bit more per square foot for their space. So, I think that was in the neighborhood of $18 a square foot there on South Palafox. I think that's coming up a little bit later. So, the $10 or whatever the number is, is quite a bit significantly lower than that. But, again, I didn't want anyone to think I was trying to reopen the door to try to renegotiate per square foot. But, anyway, thank you.
Okay. Ryan, Councilwoman Pratt, sorry, I didn't.
Thanks. Sorry. I was just going to say that I'm supportive of the request, and I guess we don't currently have a motion on the floor.
We don't. It was listed as a discussion item, but there certainly is latitude.
And I'm willing to make a motion that we amend the lease to include the sale of liquor or alcohol, whatever the official term, that would meet the requirements of the liquor license they would like to get.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second, and Ryan, I'm still going to recognize you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarity, Wine Bar also remits $1,333 every month back to the CRA for the next five years for reimbursement of improvements. So, though that $10 square foot figure may look low, there are some other contributions that they do make to the building. Also, just in terms of what the lease specifically states their permitted uses for Wine Bar, tenant may use the lease premises for the purpose of Wine Bar with possible additional retail activities of retail cheese and wine sales and restaurant activity described as a limited deli menu and dinner menu. So, fish fry, I guess, could be included in dinner, so. It does leave the food open, but we would just have to include the word "purpose of Wine Bar" and perhaps something for onsite consumption of alcohol as well. And then, though Play has pulled their request, is there any indication that I can offer to the tenant of what the inclinations would be?
I have no reason to do so.
Yeah, I have no problem with the lottery tickets being sold there. I would be able to support that.
Let's keep that separate right now. We've got the motion, and I would like to ask the owners, representatives, owners that are here in the audience to, one of you can answer this question. I think it's relevant. So, whoever wants to represent you, Bob Montgomery or Ian, question, just so we understand, and after that, I'll go ahead and give you a hint. I'm going to provide some positive feedback. Bob, how, I know at the time, the person, the city staff person you were working with certainly was very involved professionally, certainly he brought the skill of an architect, and I know that you took, you all took a building that was very much underutilized and in a state of disrepair, and came to an agreement, those of you, if you've studied the lease, we are getting reimbursement for a certain significant portion of the improvements. But Thaddeus Cohen was who you worked with, and Mr. Montgomery, was it because the Wine Bar, the market, or the business model was at the time, it's wine and cheese, how did that language ever get incorporated? Was it an oversight, or did you never imagine you were going to expand to have something more than wine?
We own two other Wine Bars, and both of those Wine Bars have alcohol in them now. I mean, we serve alcohol now. I know you're going to change this to say alcohol, but we already serve alcohol, it's just a matter of what the percentage is. Fred, I think he has some information on how this, how that little negotiation evolved, if you want to talk about that for a second. We thought we had it. I mean, I never dreamed that a Wine Bar wouldn't be able to serve alcohol.
And that's what I want everyone to understand, how we got to today.
Yeah, I won't take too much time. Basically, there was a lease negotiation that lasted a number of months. There was a final lease that was submitted, that was signed by Ian and notarized by Terry Kubach, and submitted to the city for signature. During the time that they were waiting for a signature, they, Thaddeus came back and said, "We're going to have to deed this property from the city to the CRA." So, at that time, they said, "Well, if you're changing the lease, we would also like..." Ian brought in partners, Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Cox, and they asked for additional tenant improvements, which were to be reimbursed in exchange for personal guarantees from Mr. Cox and Mr. Montgomery. Now, this was all done subsequent to my involvement. They moved forward and signed that lease, thinking it was just a change in the amount of tenant improvements and a change from the city to the CRA. And that language regarding being able to be used as a bar and being able to, and that consent not being unreasonably withheld was removed from the lease. And I literally think it was just a mistake. It was at the end of a page, and I think that it somehow came off. They signed the lease without noticing it, and that's, you know, why we're all here today, but that's the short part of it.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose an argument could be made that we overpaid when we first moved into that building, if you looked at the condition of it.
Don't go too far.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, thank you. And my, I want to thank Mr. Gunther for providing for me a very in-depth summary of the negotiations, the history of the project. It provides, for me, very solid footing in support of the motion, and if that was not shared with other CRA members, I think it's good that everyone has Fred's analysis of that. And also, I want to compliment the ownership and management in their, what appears to be diligent, consistent upkeep in their use of the city's property and the surrounding, and the surrounding area. I am there, I'm frequenting it a lot, but I would say it's early in the morning when I'm walking or running by there, and the property, I think, is in good hands.
Well, thank you. If you continue those kind of comments, we'll come to you more often.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second on what was a discussion item, which now we obviously have converted to an action item, and that is to modify the language to allow for the tenant to serve, that language is modified to be less specific and substitutes the word wine with alcohol. Am I correct?
Well, in terms of how the state, the Department of Business and Professional Regulation categorizes their alcohol licenses, currently, there's a two COP, which is a beer and wine license at the facility. I believe you'd be applying for a four COP? For a four COP, which is termed beer, wine, and liquor. So, I'd probably replicate the same language as the state uses for consistency.
Yes, Councilwoman Pratt.
One clarification, though, that I hope will make sure, I'm hope, it says that there's retail sale of wine at the premise, and I'm hoping that it doesn't become just a liquor store, too, or can we keep that it's only retail sale of wine, but serving of liquor?
We could, we could.
If that's...
I think that's a good point. I'd like Mr. Montgomery to comment on that. We already have a packaged store.
That's fine. We won't be, well, first of all, our retail sales were so small that we reduced the amount of retail wine that we had in the store anyhow. We have no intention of selling alcohol, packaged goods, or anything like that. We'd be happy to specify that.
So, Mr. Montgomery, you would, it's suitable if we have language that disallows the...
Package sale?
The sale of...
Right.
Packaged.
Package of liquor and beer, but we'd like to keep wine.
Thank you. So, with that clarification, we have a motion and a second. And again, on this one, please raise your hands, all those in favor of supporting the change, please raise your hand, and that's a unanimous vote. Thank you. All right. That takes care of action items and discussion items. We also have an opportunity for anyone to bring up new business. Yes, Councilwoman Pratt?
Just one quick thing. I think this is something that's been getting confused, both on CRA and the city. The, like, the action item today, the recommendation wasn't clearly a recommendation. It was more asking us to make it a discussion item, and I think that that, it would be nice to make sure we're sort of clear, when there is a clear recommendation that says, recommend that we, you know, extend the lease, make that a recommendation, and when we're being asked to discuss it, make a discussion item. I think that it's gotten confused on a couple other items, and I just hope that we can keep that straight as we go on.
I'll certainly try my best to do that. On an information item, I'm going to take this opportunity as chair to just inform all of you that the planning board has had a meeting, they conducted a workshop, and the participation was very well-received and encouraging. The issue is about license-to-use, and that's why I'm bringing it up while we're all sitting here in session right now. The license-to-use request for, that is coming from establishments that are located within the CRA district, and I just want to inform you that those workshops are providing opportunities for building owners, management, establishment, operators, as well as citizens that have no ownership or management, but perhaps are customers or just people that enjoy our downtown have been participating in a workshop, and please stay posted, because what we're tackling and addressing is some of the shared use of those public right-of-way spaces that are at times perhaps maximized for the benefit of the establishment owner and operator, and that there are some opportunities for conflict in terms of use of that space, cost of that space regarding, associated with perhaps collateral impact of those users, particularly those that depend heavily, rely on alcohol, the sale of alcohol. So, that's an ongoing discussion. All right. No further business. I'm looking around. With that, I adjourn the meeting.
Hey, Chris. I did finally get the agenda for the eighth trial. It finally, yeah, it would load a little more each time. Finally get through.
Chris is trying to get anyone on.
They're working now, Chris. Mine's working.
I finally got it. It took like eight times, and it finally didn't sound good.
I know you read that little point paper. The shorter answer is, yes, you can do it. Yes, you can do it before the time department put it on the ballot, and it's going to cost us money. And the only reason he's charging us is because he's got different items on the ballot now, and it's going to swap over to a third page. He's just printing costs.
Oh, really? Good job, Miss Jim.
But you're saying therefore, I read this right here, they both did some...
That's your wife?
A and B in 2014. I got a little confused on that one there. Okay. Yeah, you did a good job.
I get to change my seating habit there.
Yeah, good job, Ryan.
Sure.
I know it, I got running late. I still am just now, getting to all my damn emails.
Welcome to the committee as a whole. We try to follow the agenda as clearly as it's been published. Sometimes things get moved around just a little bit. I'll try to keep that to a minimum today. The first part of the meeting is the Boyd Forum, and I have three people here that have...
indicated they'd like to speak to that, but it's actually for your golf cart item, and I'll call you later, recognize you later for that.
Then it's on the agenda.
Yes, because that's on the agenda later, Ms. Stevenson.
That's good, I just want to make sure that, we've already lost two or three people because of the rearrangement, and so if they want to go, I would just like to say that there, there are folks here who do support this, and if they wanted to raise their hand now, if something should happen and they have to leave...
That would be fine. All of you that are in favor of having golf carts in the neighborhood, just raise your hand. Okay.
We lost at least three.
Okay.
Excuse me, four. There were two women and Clifton Doodly Do from Seville Quarter, Mitchell, excuse me, Clifton Mitchell. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Townsend, is there anybody opposed? Okay, so.
Girl, then bring them.
Okay, all right. The, Mr., that moves us, so there's nobody else to speak during Boyd Forum. On the council discussion items, we had to pull the item on the homelessness presentation day because Mr. Mueller has left town. Now we're to operation of golf carts or low-speed vehicles on certain roadways. Ms. Stevenson?
Sorry, you know, I usually do this from the cuff, but today, this is so important. I just want to say casually, however, at the beginning of this thing, I decided I was going to do a bunch of research and take a look around, and boy, was I enlightened. I think you all will be, too, and pleasantly so. So, members of the council and city staff, thanks for agreeing to discuss this today. In recent weeks, I discovered that not only are golf carts used in Pensacola by residents, but by businesses, churches, and our own fire department. Their numbers are growing. Golf carts are becoming a vehicle of choice as they're efficient, economical, and almost indispensable in running day-to-day businesses in and near downtown, to name a few. Baptist Healthcare, First Baptist Church, Seville Quarter, our own fire department's EMTs using them for events when they're on duty on Thursday nights in Seville Square. The fire department's use is lawful by special provision in the state statutes, and the fire department attests most positively to using them. Their riding in the open air is a serene way to get around, that's just a side benefit. They're an alternative means of vehicular traffic pushed to the lowest denominator based on the needs of the business or the resident. Got dogs, a child, or a person who can't walk well, you want to take to the park? The only alternatives are to walk in the streets with automobile traffic, or take a car. Using a golf cart removes one more car, and usually several beings, from the street. You may say, how about sidewalks? Even in East Hill, sidewalks remain a patchwork. This will continue. People don't want them in their yards, and stop the work by complaining. The money to do a partial job seems wasteful. If the only options are, number one, walk in the streets, or two, take a regular car, I submit that within our neighborhoods, within our neighborhoods, golf carts beat both, hands down. Again, the population of golf carts used in Pensacola by our businesses and residents is growing. Let's take advantage of state statutes to create an ordinance for their use and prevent the sporadic enforcement that exists today. Now, I understand that doing this may seem overwhelming to you, you've got signage, funding for that, we're to allow the golf carts, but we're not going to put this all off on you, who have ideas right now, and are willing to work. Ultimately, we will be better for the city regarding safety, and perhaps even liability issues, to create this ordinance. Please move forward to the next step today. I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Ms. Godwin.
Thank you, Eleanor Godwin, and I promise I did not get this by falling out of a golf cart.
Pull the microphone down just a little bit, there you go. Thank you.
But I am looking for the sympathy vote. Thank you very much for putting this item on the agenda today for discussion. Recently, the city of Pensacola has taken several progressive steps to improve the sense of community in our area. I feel that allowing the use of golf carts on city streets is another such step, keeping, of course, safety first in mind. Please, however, let's not lump low-speed vehicles, LSVs, and golf carts together in the same discussion. They are two very distinct vehicles by state statute. LSVs, low-speed vehicles, are already allowed per state statute 316.2122 on streets with a speed limit of 35 miles an hour or less. They are far more expensive than golf carts, nearly double, or maybe more than double, and not a reasonable alternative for many who already own golf carts, so to simply say, get a low-speed vehicles, not a good option. I would propose allowing golf carts on neighborhood streets where the speed limit is 30 miles an hour or less, and maybe strengthen the state requirements and require a licensed driver to operate. There are many other considerations to discuss, and time to certainly do that, but existing ordinances that are so easy to find on the internet provide great guidance in crafting our own. Allowing a safer, safer alternative to walking or biking where there aren't sidewalks, for example, in my neighborhood, and removing even a few automobiles from the road is a benefit to many. I don't see a rash of new golf carts quickly appearing as a result of this, but at least a legal use of those that are already in service, both personal and business. I would also volunteer to serve as part of a citizens advisory committee to help draft this ordinance, if you so desire. Thank you so much for considering this issue.
Thank you. Mr. George Biggs.
Council members, as a second of what Blair and Eleanor had to say, I've, I live in East Hill, my name is George Biggs on Blackshear, and I've owned a golf cart and operated, I've actually worn one out, I'm on my second one, in East Hill, and it's a wonderful device to have. I've watched older couples use them who can't get around much. I use it to take my children to the beautiful parks that the city of Pensacola maintains in East Hill. I consider it very forward-thinking for the city to consider it, as part of, from an economic, from an ecological or environmental point of view, new urbanism point of view. I think it's a very forward-thinking idea, and I hope you all will consider it, consider an ordinance to make it a legal device to use on our city streets, as appropriate from a safety point of view. Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nancy Rodriguez, and I'm representing Seville Quarter. Cliff Mitchell was here, one of the owners, and he's letting me talk. We've been using it for over 15 years. We just got our, a new one because we saved money because we used it so much. Our maintenance people go around the block and pick up trash, and it's very helpful with that because we try to keep the area around Seville Quarter clean. We also use it to take things to Seville Square, and we have things, it's much easier to pile on some chairs and other things, and take them down in the golf cart. And to be quite honest, I've used it to go to the, to go to the mail, mailbox when the postman's already come because it's really hot out. So we really would encourage you to do the ordinance. Again, we would be willing to put people on the citizens advisory board. We believe that it's much more environmental friendly. It's hard finding parking downtown sometimes when you need to go to the post office or just go around the corner. It makes it much more expedient for us to get to and from. As a matter of fact, I drove the golf cart here. So please, take into consideration the use for it. We do have a little light on top, and you will see Ivan using it, too, but it is used for economic reasons and for environmental reasons. It's much easier to park, much easier to get around, and we really enjoy using it. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I guess it's time for council to weigh in. I just, I just get my thoughts out here quickly. The one is about having to be perhaps a licensed driver, that would give me concern. I know when I had to rent very briefly out in Cantonment, we had nine and 10-year-old kids out there running all over the neighborhood, you know, in, in the big gas-powered golf, golf carts, you know, unlicensed, and they were really quite dangerous. And so, if not a driver's license, perhaps at least an H requirement there. The other thing is, is, you know, in the Amish country, or almost any farming country, they've got the red triangle on, on, on the back. I would, I would think we'd want something like that, or a strobe light on, on, on the cart. But those are just my thoughts. Ms. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I am in complete support of this. I, in District Three, I know that there's several people within the neighborhoods that use them to get to parks. There's actually a teacher that drives it to school every day. The, the ideas that have been brought forward are very sensible ones, that the 30 mile-per-hour streets, because some of those are feeder roads, and, you know, if you see striping on it, it can still be 30 miles per hour, but it's still considered a neighborhood street as well. A licensed driver, and I don't know what the other municipalities have been doing as far as permitting, but, you know, this is something that could become more mainstream, and if so, then it should follow, you know, licensed drivers and lighting, and you could have day or night use, so you'd have to have lights on it. I don't want our ordinance to be prohibitive to the average golf cart owner, but that we, you know, we move forward on this as soon as we can. The safety items that you brought up, Mr. President, are good with reflective striping on the front, backsides, whatever, but that we go ahead and move forward with this. So I don't know if you need a motion to request that staff work with the interested group here to craft an ordinance, if you're at that point.
Well, I think if you're at that point, go ahead and make, make, make the motion.
And I want to keep it general, so I'm simply in support of it, asking, requesting that staff work with the interested parties in drafting an ordinance for golf cart use on neighborhood streets.
Okay. Second. So we got a motion and a second. Anybody else on council?
Comments?
Comments, yes. Dr. Wood.
I'm at the stage where picture seesaw is sort of balanced, and I can go either way. In looking at where there are golf courses on golf carts, it seems to be in much smaller cities. For example, I visited, wife and I visited Cedar Key, and that's about all they use in Cedar Key, are golf carts. But it is a much smaller place. Visit also the villages, and they pretty much, I think, every golf cart in America must be somewhere in the villages because everybody there is running around in golf cart. But that was a community that was built from the ground up to accommodate the golf carts. What I would like to see as we move forward is, I'd like to know what liability issues are involved. In other words, if we as a city approve the use of them, somebody gets hurt in it, I don't want the city then turn around and being sued because of the person taking the golf cart out. I know a lot of cities have a requirement for licenses, that you have to be a certain age to be in the golf cart. I know other cities give decals that you can put out that said the cart's been inspected. Again, I'm not for, I'm not against, I can see both sides of it. The only thing that concerns me is the liability issue and the safety issue. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Spencer.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'll go after you. That's okay. You go ahead.
All right, thanks. Certainly, I appreciate now that it's important for a motion and a second to occur to engage us in the next phase of lively discussion. So that's where I am, lively discussion. I have a, enjoy a golf, the use of a golf cart in a second-home community in the Sandestine area, purchased that golf cart, used about eight years ago, and, and definitely appreciated the, the access in terms of having a motorized or electrified vehicle at a lower cost. I immediately upgraded that so that it would run at a speedy, maybe 19 miles an hour. Sometimes if, if the passenger load is exceptionally light, it may hit 21 miles an hour instead of 15 miles an hour, and that golf cart weighs somewhere between maybe 700 to 900 pounds compared to a Dodge Ram truck, which weighs 37,000 pounds. So my experience driving a golf cart is I am enjoying that experience in a context where I am on paved roads, but those are all private roads, and even that Dodge Ram truck is limited to 21 miles an hour. So my feeling of, of safety is somewhat, is somewhat increased, although getting tugged by that Ram truck even at the same speed is not going to be an enjoyable event. I will go on record as saying, I think there are so many concerns that we have to address in order to confidently open the door to, to the concept of sharing streets, public right-of-ways, or expanding the, the legal use of those right-of-ways to include slow-moving or golf carts that, that just do not have the required, the mandatory safety mechanisms in place, or protective measures. The other thing that I want to point out is, I mean, personally, I can't endorse this until I feel like we have gone to the extreme to increase safety, and I point to that different, that difference in the Ram truck and the golf cart. I also want to remind everyone that communities, the characteristics of golf cart, golf cart-centric communities can be very different than, for instance, in East Hill, which has a high, higher density of intersections. It's a, it's, it's a gridded neighborhood, so every intersection is one more opportunity for one driver of a vehicle to not see the other driver. Mr. Biggs spoke of his positive experience and enjoyment of his golf cart on, in East Hill, and I know he lives on Blackshear Avenue. It's a, it's a great picturesque, curvilinear road that, that follows the bayou, and, and that particular portion of East Hill enjoys, I think, a particularly unique context, and, that is not the same as if you were in the middle of a gridded, a grid neighborhood. Finally, the, well, I could go on and on, but the conversation needs to include daytime use or nighttime, daytime use and nighttime use. But most importantly, I just, I just think that the, the vulnerability of the occupants in that golf cart is, is too great for me right now to feel satisfied with being able to share that roadway unless we are able to convince the public to place or impart upon themselves a radically or drastically lower speed limit regardless of, of what moving vehicle type you're in. Thank you. I just had a, had a question. Did you anticipate, when you said 30 miles an hour or less, it's 30 miles an hour along 12th Avenue going through East Hill, and I would think that that would be an inappropriate road for the, the golf carts. Ms. Godwin.
In reading lots of other ordinances, they have come upon the same things, and they find streets that maybe meet the speed limit, but not the practicality because of volume of traffic, et cetera, you just exclude those. So you'd say, yes, 30 miles an hour or less, but exclude 12th Avenue, this area to this area, whatever.
Okay.
So you can, you can address that.
All right, thank, thank, thank you. Ms. Myers, then Dr. Brad.
Yeah, I too want to express my... Yeah, I too want to express my concerns about the safety of allowing golf carts on certain roads particularly. If you want to ride a golf cart in my particular community, it would be fine. I think people would be perfectly safe, and it's an appropriate neighborhood to drive a golf cart. However, there is no way, no way, I would ever approve driving a golf cart on Burgess Road. However, Burgess Road has a 25 mile an hour speed limit, and I defy you to find anyone, including myself. And I will get caught one of these days, and will justifiably get a ticket and honor the police for doing their job. But it's hard to go 25 miles an hour. But regardless of, you can have a road that says 25 miles an hour does not mean people are going to go 25 miles an hour. I wouldn't want to see a golf cart on Sanders Street, or Langley Avenue. So, I, I think we have to be very careful where we allow golf carts. And I, and I do think in some neighborhoods, they are perfectly appropriate, my neighborhood being one of them. But, once I get out on Burgess Road, no, Burgess Road is not one, Sanders Street, I can think of a lot of streets where the speed limit is 25 miles an hour, but people are not doing those speed limits. And the other thing, especially in District Two, you have a large amount of roadway, some of it's in the city limits, and then some of it's in the county. It's just all, so while you may live on a street that, for instance, Sanders Street, one side of it's in the city, and one side's in the county, and one block's in the city, and the rest is in the county. So, that becomes problematic too. So, I think we have to be extremely careful where we allow these vehicles, and under what conditions. So, I haven't seen an ordinance, I, I mean, I will support the motion to have staff look at it. That doesn't mean we are going to approve it, but at least we can look at it, and at least it's a starting place. So, anyway, those are just my thoughts.
Okay, it's Dr. Pratt, then Mr. Townsend, then Mr. Gerald, then Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have serious concerns about this item. First, speakers mentioned that this was an environmental benefit, but I would beg to differ. I think that the range in which people would possibly use a golf cart to go from Seville Quarter to the post office is perfectly walkable. You know, I've had people who have said to me, I had recently said that walking from Seville Square to the post office was within walkable, and they're like, no, it's not. It's like, oh, come on, it's like 10 minute walk. If we can't walk that, you know, we're not getting our 5,000 steps a day that they, they say we should. I think the environmental thing is, is, is not valid. There are people who cannot walk that distance and need to drive, and they can drive their car, it won't make a huge difference in our environmental footprint. But, and so, then I think ultimately the safety thing is, is what, what kills it for me. You know, most of us, the main thing we hear from constituents is, hey, we need a speed trap on my street, people are going too fast, too fast, too fast, too fast. And if people, you know, we're saying, oh, it's only on 25 mile an hour streets, 30 mile an hour streets, but those streets, as I hear from neighbors, are not 25 or 30 miles an hour, they're 40 miles an hour cars. And as Councilman Spencer said, that Dodge Ram truck, they win very majorly if there, if there's a mistake. And, and I'm going to share two, two stories with you. I was speaking to a Pensacola woman recently, who was telling me about her grand, her, her mother was driving her daughter and son in, in a golf cart. Golf carts have no seat belts, they have no doors. And, and the, the kids are, you know, or the passenger is right next to the steering wheel. The, the son pulled the steering wheel. They were going pitiful speed, pulled the steering wheel. The daughter sitting in the back fell out, hit her head, and has had untreatable seizures since then. Those are the kinds of things that, that's why we have seatbelt laws, we have crash laws and airbags, because, you know, we don't want those things to happen, especially to children. And then a similar story from a different part of the world, in, in more rural areas, the equivalent of golf carts would be four-wheelers. And my brother-in-law and his friend, when they were 16, were driving the four-wheeler to baseball practice. That was sort of how, that's very common up there. They were crossing a road, a truck didn't see them, hit them, he lost his leg, his friend had serious internal injuries. These are the kinds of injuries that we can expect in allowing these kind of vehicles. Those injuries wouldn't have happened if they had been in a modern car. I understand that, that, you know, some of our streets don't have sidewalks, and that walking in the road is not desirable, but typically, if you're walking in the road and a car's coming, you can step to the side. I do it all of the time. You're not, you're, you're much more conscious of your surroundings, you're never going very fast. Someone said that they consider driving a golf cart safer than walking or running, and, but I would beg to differ. And I, those, those people that I know, those stories keep me from supporting this. Councilman Wu mentioned his concerns about the city's liability, but ultimately, to me, it's my conscience. If I approve this, and I hear something like that happened in our city because we have allowed it, I would, I would regret what, what we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some reservations also, similar to, to what you heard, so I won't repeat those. I guess I need to ask the question, these petty vehicles that's carrying the folks back and forth to the stadium, how are they operating within this city? Because I've noticed that they are creating some real issues on the road, and I don't know whether the officers have had a chance to see the problems that, that a lot of the vehicles are encountering when they meet these, because they are getting right in the middle of the street, and they're creating some problems. And, Fred, we're going to have a bad accident right over here, transporting folks back and forth from Seville to the stadium. And I don't know whether they needed any special kind of permission to do that. I don't recall hearing any. But I have some reservations based on everything that we said. Maybe there's some history or some information out there that can share some light on just how other cities are, are actually meeting this situation. And if that's so, it might give some relief to some of the concerns that, that we have, that I have. I know it would.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Townsend, I can tell you that the pedicabs are licensed under a permitting process with the city. However, I can also tell you that yes, you're exactly right. We have had multiple issues with the pedicabs, and we're in the process of trying to work some of those out. And I think that, you know, you're very good to pick up on that issue, because I think that is, what you'll see is even a bigger issue if, if, you know, once we look at bringing golf carts or other type of low-speed vehicles to the city streets. Staff has already done a considerable amount of work on this particular issue. One of the interesting things we found out, there are law firms out there that specifically target accidents with golf carts and low-speed vehicles. I mean, that's exactly what they do. That's their, that's become their, their area of expertise, if you will. So, and also the, the process of determining what roads would be appropriate is rather in-depth, and it can't just be simply anything below 30 miles per hour. Each particular intersection, and each particular roadway has to be analyzed, per state statute, in regards to the safety concerns and issues. This is not a relatively easy thing to do. This is going to be, if it's, if it's something that we decided to do, excuse me, that you decide to look at, it's going to take a significant amount of time. Any vehicle crossing of a state roadway has to have specific state permission as well. And, and then obviously, with our patchwork quilt between the city and the county that we have in the northern part of the city, could be some concerns there. There are a lot of issues to look at in regards to this particular item. Like I said, staff, principally Mr. Weinecke, have done already an enormous amount of research, but the more research that we look at, the more legitimate concerns there are. Does that mean it couldn't be successful? Absolutely not. I think, I think that the council just needs to, to go forward with the realization that if this is something you want to do, it's going to take a significant amount of time. And I could see the process being quite literally nine months to a year before we would even be in a position where we could bring something forward that would take care of those issues and actually have, once that occurs, the permitting and everything, and that's going to be required. So it's, it's going to be a significant amount of work.
Okay. Oh, it would be Mr. Gerald's, Mr. Johnson, then Mr. Spencer. Before I call him, Mr. Gerald's. So you, Mr. Reynolds, are 12 months, if, if we could get the maker of the motion to amend that, to include, you know, you know, a delivery time on that product or recommendation?
I, I think the ordinance will be relatively easy to draft. The, the bigger issue is all of the, the ancillary things that need to be accomplished in order to do that. For example, let's just talk about permitting. So if we're going to allow certain vehicles, we have to figure out what it is and how we're going to permit these vehicles. Are we going to require inspections by the police department, determine if they're safe? What charges are we going to have as, as a city for, for, for these vehicles, based upon all of the things that we're going to have to do in regards to that permitting process? Are we going to have to require lights on vehicles? You know, these are all issues that will have to be researched, and certainly, we can look at other communities to determine what, what may or may not work for the community of Pensacola. But it's, again, it's going to be a time-intensive product, and I just don't want this body to think that, you know, if you vote to move forward, that you're going to have something in 60 days. It's simply not going to occur.
Okay. And, and the other thing, Mr. Dewis, I know you, your motion was to allow this to happen, and just have the mayor's staff make it so. Would you be willing to, because there are apparent many, many complications and considerations that I had not considered before, to just put it in the mayor's lap, to come back with a recommendation, yes or no on this, or do you want it to be certain that, that it's an affirmative vote?
Well, I think that, you know, you see, the use of golf carts has existed for many years, so to say that they would be outright not allowed in our city is, is a ridiculous proposition. I understand the concerns, and that's what I talked about, that I trust staff and our public safety officers to bring something that is a safe ordinance to us. You know, use within neighborhoods, and, you know, when we lived in Münster, Germany, and there were bike boulevards where, you know, it, it meanders through neighborhoods, and there's a sign that says "bike," you know, so you know to use this neighborhood street, to stay out of the mainstream traffic. And you can identify those, just like we would say that's safe for runners and bikers, and, you know, the ideal locations to use them. You know, I know the concerns about crossing a state road. Actually, one constituent that was in opposition lives on Summit Boulevard, and that's a rather busy road. And I, I don't know that folks actually cross those main roads. The people that I'm thinking of that use these, it's mostly neighborhood use. But downtown, I mean, we're trying to create neighborhoods downtown, so neighborhood use downtown is a different definition, but these businesses, there's restaurants that use them, there are residents that use them. So I didn't intend to be in a protracted debate today. We've had the debate before the ordinance is even being worked on. I think there is an interested group of citizens that will carry a lot of the weight on doing some of this research. And I, you know, just because of our form of government, we need to officially request that we do move forward. So we need to express a yes or a no, unless Mr. Reynolds is okay with moving forward, knowing that we want it to move forward without a motion, so.
Okay, okay. Mr. Gerald's, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Spencer, and then Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the more we talk, this is almost like talking about a flood, the water's getting deeper. My question is, are golf carts prohibited in the city of Pensacola presently? We've had people tell us they're using them already.
Mr. Reynolds?
Are they prohibited?
Other than the, the particular vehicles that the, the fire department uses, which are permitted, the answer to that question from a purely legal standpoint is that yes, they are currently prohibited.
Well, under those circumstances, I would agree with Mr. Dewis to move forward with, even though I understand the tedious work that stands before staff or the committee who is willing to do the research, to develop an ordinance that would be acceptable. But though I've heard no reports of any incidents that have occurred as a result of their use, and it's indicating that they, they are permissible, it may just be a matter of tightening up the things that we will need to tighten up. Personally, I don't own a golf cart, so I won't be in one. But when it comes down to safety, that's a concern of mine, but it's been stated, we're, we're talking about the details of the ordinance when the ordinance hadn't been developed, and hopefully during the development of the ordinance, the concerns that I'm hearing going around the table now, I would hope would be addressed, to the point where, and it certainly would be addressed, discussed, and modified. But if we're looking at 12 months down the road, I'd say let them go forward with developing an ordinance, and see if in 12 months, can we come up with an agreement to allow it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll make my own brief. You know, devil's in the details, you know, and this is everything we've talked about. I mean, there's also issues of age, how old will they have to be, brake lights, turn signals, what streets, will we mark the streets that they'll be allowed on, who's going to pay for the signs, you know, it just, there's just devils in the details. And I think that, you know, I'm, I'm okay with letting a committee form, and maybe bring us something to us that we can look at and vote yes or no on. But, you know, I just, I've got concerns, I'm on the fence on this, I'm not going to say I'm going to agree with it or not today, but I, I just got concerns about marking, you know, how do people know if they're on a street that's, that golf carts are allowed or not? You know, also, it was mentioned to me that there's some golf carts out there that are street legal, that if someone wants to drive a golf cart, that they have every opportunity, if they can afford it, to go out and buy a golf cart that is street legal, that does have turn signal, brake lights, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I'm going to try to keep an open mind on this, but, you know, again, devil's in the details, and there's just so many things out there. And I, and I could worry about safety too. You know, I, I've seen, I've been at Bayview playing tennis at the tennis courts, and I've seen the kids in the golf carts go down the bike lane, you know, at, you know, 20 miles an hour, and just about flip the thing, you know, and so, and that's reality, and, or almost run over somebody in that lane. And so, you know, golf carts being electric, you, you don't hear them, you know, people, they, they could run over somebody without the people being aware that they're right behind them. So, I've got a lot of issues with it. I think there's a lot of work to be done on this, but if, if there's a committee formed, and they want to bring a proposal, an ordinance forward, then we can take a look at it and vote on it. Thanks.
Mr. Spencer?
Thank you. And I, I think Councilwoman Dewis mentioned that she didn't intend for this to be any sort of protracted or lengthy discussion. I guess what I was trying to do, fellow council members, was just fast-forward, just take us to the conversation as I began to explore the issues, not dissimilar to someone approaching, for instance, Mr. Biggs, a very qualified general contractor with a diagram of a building, and putting it in front of him, and trying to convince him that it's a very simple building to construct. And 20 minutes later, Mr. Biggs, because of his And twenty minutes later, Mr. Biggs, because of his knowledge, is able to convince me that that simple diagram, in fact, is quite complex, given all the goals that I may have regarding that building. And that's the analogy I have as I begin to just consider all of the issues. And really, I can sum it up in, really, one phrase, and that is, it has to do with momentum. You know, momentum is mass in motion. And I, like Councilwoman Pratt, feel as though we have a tremendous responsibility to consider the reality of physics in this. And getting back to marking roads, how do we inform the users? How do we inform the visitors? How do you train policemen to be able to say, oh, yeah, that's a street you can be on, that's a street you can't be on? Don't cross that road. That's not a golf cart-legal road. Is there some form of border gates? It's just the temptation, I think, is too great to expect for complete compliance. And the only way that I can support this is if we reach a conclusion is if there is a blanket change for every single driver of any powered vehicle, whether it be electric car, whatever, to be, again, restrained to a significantly lower speed. One other comment, when those batteries start to run low, your once speedy twenty-one mile-an-hour golf cart is on the road puttering along at nine miles an hour.
Okay, Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to withdraw my second of the motion because the more I hear, the more I can't support this motion, especially in light of what Mr. Reynolds just told us, that this is going to take a tremendous amount of staff time. And we're doing this supposedly in the name of the environment. I can think of environmental issues that are much more important that staff should be working on rather than this. I mean, we have some really important environmental issues that hopefully, the Environmental Advisory Board will be bringing toward us, for us. So, I would like to, I'm not going to support this motion, even though I seconded because of the time.
Actually, Mr. Gerald's did.
Okay. Well, I'm going on record not supporting this because of the enormous amount of time Mr. Reynolds has just told us it's going to take to bring something to us. So, I will not be supporting it.
Well, that's one reason I think that it was important to go ahead and have the discussion today in light of what Mr. Reynolds said, the amount of work that it goes into it, is that we get a chance to vote on it, up or down. And I know that if it goes forward and he comes back in twelve months, that we're going to have hours of discussion on the ordinance itself. But if it's going to be a thousand man-hours or more, or person-hours, employee-hours or more, or two thousand, I think we have to be mindful of how much work that entails for something that, quite frankly, may not pass any year from now. And so, I'm glad we had the discussion today on that. Does anybody want to, yeah, Dr. Pratt?
I just wanted to comment on something Mr. Gerald said, that he wasn't worried about the safety because he doesn't own one and won't be in one. But unfortunately, he might be in the car that was doing exactly what he was supposed to do, hits the car, hits the golf cart and kills someone. And that, you know, even if you're in the right, you have still, their safety has affected your life. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, you know, maybe, and Ms. Stevenson and Ms. Godwin and Mr. Biggs would like to put something together, maybe some type of ordinance, do some research, try to bring something forward that we can take a look at. They've heard many of the issues that we've talked about today, age, lights, you know, streets marked, different things, liability, all those things. Maybe they could bring some type of proposal to us, get us a little bit further down the road. I would, you know, very much take a look at that with an open mind. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald.
Mr. President, a question here. If the motion fails, that means they won't be able to bring it up for a while?
Well, the prevailing side can...
Someone else would have to bring it back to the table.
Whoever's on the prevailing side would be able to bring it back up again. For example, Ms. Myers has stated that she's going to vote no. And if the no is the prevailing side and she changes her mind, she can't bring that up again. Or if we had an absent member from council, it could be brought up for reconsideration.
Well, under those circumstances, I'm going to withdraw my second.
Okay. Gotcha. Mr. DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I did want to also say that if we could, instead of taking action today, because that is my concern as well, hearing all the concerns around the table, is that we set a thirty-day period for council to put their concerns in writing and give that to staff, and then also give the group that is very interested in this a chance to bring forward the safety concerns and the remedies in other communities and bring, not an ordinance written, because that needs to be written by staff, but bring the components that they are needing or wanting with regard to golf carts and bring that forward. So, it's not asking for any more staff time at this point, except for us as council making a commitment that we will communicate our concerns to Ms. Major, and that can be compiled, and that we can have a meeting in a month's time and have the committee, if we want to ask them to, it's an informal committee, but they've been working very hard on this and come forward with addressing some of the concerns they've heard here today.
Okay.
So, withdrawing my motion.
Well, Ms. Stevenson, the motion is off?
It does, I just would, can I speak?
Very, very, very briefly. Fifteen seconds.
Okay, well, here's the thing. You've said lots of things, but the part that we gave you was mostly fluff. Our two talks that we gave, Ellen or me, George, actually, I mean, we gave you stories and situations. And I know that, for instance, you had some grave concerns, and you talked about Georgia's lovely street. But I live on the gritted area. I live right on Nineteenth Avenue where there's boatloads of cars. I'm not about to get out there with my dogs. I cannot get out of the way of cars. Not about to. So, I take my car every day. But the point is, the state statutes allow you to do this. The state has minimum safety requirements. All those things you were talking about, that you were concerned about, the things that those people didn't have, seat belts, lights, turn, you know, signals, the state allows all that.
Okay, Ms. Stevenson, that's what Mr. DeWes is talking about. Let's revisit this again in thirty days.
Can we talk with staff? Is that what we're going to be allowed to?
Certainly, absolutely.
Because we can address most everything that so many people have been concerned about, and we certainly want you to feel comfortable. And so, I appreciate that. And who will contact who?
Who will contact me?
Who will contact who?
Oh, I've got, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I need to make sure everybody understands that this isn't part of the mayor's agenda. And absent this body making a formal request for us to devote staff time to it, it's going to be very difficult for me to be able to do that. You know, I need to be able to make sure that Mr. Weinecke has spent multiple hours on this issue already, just getting us to where we are today. So, as I've said in the past, it's very important for a request that comes in from this body to be an actual vote, so then I can move forward and at least justify expending staff time on it. And I would just throw that out there and recognize that I certainly don't have a problem having some initial discussions. But the thought of devoting a lot of staff time to the issue, if it's something that can't even pass the council, is not something that I'm going to recommend that we do.
Okay. There we go. All right. I apologize, Ms. Stevenson.
Well, we didn't have any chance to have a discussion with you. It was just internal. And the one thing I'm concerned about is how many people are already out there, and there's not being even enforcement. So, that is really more of a liability issue for the city. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and contact me later this week, and I'll see what I can do to resolve this little impasse that's here.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, that moves us to council actions. Code Enforcement Board requests for lien reduction sixteen oh two West Garden Street. Recommendation that City Council approve a recommendation from the special magistrate to reduce the recorded lien against a property located at sixteen oh two West Garden Street and authorize the mayor to execute the appropriate documents.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Yes, sir.
Sir, just to inform everybody about the typo in the subject line, it should say, "Special magistrate request for lien reduction." Obviously, we no longer have a code enforcement board, so I just want to make sure that that was clear.
Okay. Discussion. Dr. Pratt.
On this, but just something that we need to consider in the future, is the changes to our code enforcement structure, moving the code enforcement board, did sort of leave a hole in terms of how these kinds of things come up. And I think that that is something we need to consider, making some amendments to our ordinances, because this sort of got, as I understood it, in some sort of nebulous world, and it wasn't clear what the proper course is. The special magistrate technically isn't supposed to do these, and so, we need to have our attorney deal with fixing the ordinance. So, just for a future item.
And our attorney, talk to him after the meeting.
I'll be there.
If I understand this correctly, this is a forgiveness of about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, is that right?
Yes.
And we will be receiving just the upfront cost of what the city got for demolishing and the other recordings of that nature.
Mr. Reynolds, with your permission, could we have Mr. Weinecke?
Mr. Weeks.
Weeks, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes, sir. And if I can start, just if I may, comment on this from a larger context. As everyone is well aware, we have been looking from, on the administration's aspect of ensuring that we're just not willy-nilly forgiving liens. You know, we really have worked hard with the support of this particular body in regards to giving both building inspections and code enforcement the teeth that they need in order to move things forward. This is a particularly, this is a different case, though. There is no windfall to the individual who's selling the property. A lot of times, you will have requests where somebody comes in and they're going to sell something for a hundred thousand dollars, and they want you to forgive eighty thousand dollars worth of liens. And then they go and they pocket the hundred thousand dollars. That's not the case here at all. And that's why this is specifically different than some of those other cases where we would not be recommending, there wouldn't be a recommendation as to whether or not to pass it or not. Specifically, if I can refer you to the letter from Mr. Gunther, it talks about the actual sale, that this is a short sale, and that the individual will not receive any sale proceeds at closing. That's an important piece of this, and we certainly don't want anyone to, that's maybe listening out there, to somehow think that if they bring something forward, and just because they have eighty thousand dollars in liens or whatever, that the city will not be looking to ensure that we get that lien proceeds.
Thank you. Mr. Weeks, do you have anything?
May I make a follow-up comment?
Sure.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mr. Reynolds, because that was the concern that I had. And this had, based on what I read, had some peculiarities that dictated our sympathy toward this amount of money. But I wouldn't want the public, or I don't feel that way, that we are in a position that to continue, to continue, to continue to just say we forgive you if we're going to make our policies very enforceable, if you understand. So, I appreciate the comment.
All right. Mr. Weeks, did you have anything to add to that? Okay, all right, thank you. Any more discussion in the public? Please vote. On favor? Aye. All opposed? And that passes unanimously. Item number four. Recommendation that City Council consider the proposed amendments to sections four dash two dash one, four dash two dash three, four dash two dash four, and four two, four dash two dash five, and repeal that section. Four dash two dash six, parent B of the city code, is requested by several citizens who support the concept of urban farming.
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I did want to have a few questions answered. I know I spoke with concern about the people that were actually following the rules about where the coop should be located and such. But when I made those statements, I was aware of a particular situation where a playset up high, rather up high, was being provided as the coop for the chickens, and it wasn't to any of the existing code at that point, and I do not believe would be part of this existing or this new, this proposed ordinance. So, that was my concern as far as how that would be enforced. You know, one of my concerns was also that some municipalities require permitting and inspection and that sort of thing. So, I just want to hear from other council members about their concerns as well. Thank you.
Ms. Myers.
Well, I support the ordinance because it is a vast improvement over the ordinance we presently have, which allows people to have unlimited numbers of chickens, roosters, ducks, peacocks, and so forth. I think that this ordinance is very reasonable. It allows for only up to eight chickens, hens. It outlaws roosters. It allows for the hens or ducks, whatever it may be, to be free roaming. And it also allows the keeping of the coop does not apply to the person's own building structure, but the distance applies to other structures. I think it's a very reasonable ordinance. I have had a few people bring up the issue of odor. However, we do have nuisance ordinances that address odors coming from animals, and certainly, those would be applicable here. So, I think it's very reasonable, and I wouldn't want a permitting requirement just for having eight hens. And so, I'm going to support the ordinance, and I hope council will support it also.
Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like an explanation of, in the section four, two, three, the language suggested changes it so that it says they shall be, without the provision of coops, pens, or enclosures. And then it adds to prevent, and then it was changed from basically letting them get out on the streets to access by predators. And then it said, "Free range is allowed as long as they're prevented from going upon the streets." I mean, basically, I'm imagining you would do fences unless people keep chickens on leashes. Is that what we're, I mean, is why would we be changing it from having enclosures? You know, I mean, I'm not seeing what the rationale for changing that is. It just seems to make sense.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, I'm going to defer to Mr. Steve Weinecke, who is clearly the chicken king of the city of Pensacola. Along with golf carts, cemeteries, anything. Councilwoman Pratt, the reason we did that is the prior ordinance, or the existing ordinance, is you have to keep them in enclosures. And one of the urban farming, I guess, one of the...
And one of the, one of the urban farming, I guess, one of their wishes was to allow free ranging of chickens in a yard as long as they're in a fenced yard. The coops are still mandatory, you know, to protect from predators, and that's why the language was changed. Just simple as that. Now you can allow free ranging as long as they can't roam around, and yes, most people would have fences instead of leashes.
I guess I just read enclosures as fences, and so, you know, I hope that they will be in an enclosure. I mean, whether it's a very big enclosure or a very small enclosure, I just don't see a reason to change that part of the language. It makes it rather odd. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the committee? Public? Oh, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I, you know, I was at Jerry's driving today when I got back from Key West, which in Key West, they have chickens everywhere. I had chickens all around my feet, roosters, et cetera, as I was enjoying breakfast yesterday. There were some fences there, supposedly we're going to keep them out of the restaurant area, but these chickens somehow got through over, somehow got into the eating area, and they were everywhere at Key West. But today at Jerry's, I was eating lunch, and someone came up to me and said, I got kind of sidetracked there, but at Jerry's today, somebody came up to me and said, you know, please don't allow the chickens. And I think that, the way I understand it, you know, chickens are allowed today, it's just that we're tightening up the ordinance that regulates that. I think that that should be, hopefully, explained to citizens out there that we're not, you know, allowing or disallowing chickens. I guess the way it is now, they are allowed. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, council. And unlimited amounts, as it is now. The ordinance that y'all are reviewing for possible approval is much stricter than what we have on the books now. It's much more stringent, but it allows caveats for your urban farmers. And in a nutshell, it's a much tougher ordinance than what's on the books now. Right now, there is no limitation to how many chickens you can have. You can have roosters. So it's much more stringent.
Right, and I, yeah, I appreciate you sharing that, because it just, there seems to be this idea out there that we're, this issue before us today is either allowing chickens or not allowing chickens. And I hope that maybe the media will explain that to where the public will understand it better, because I had someone come up to me today at Jerry's saying, "Don't allow chickens." And so, with that said, I think I'll be able to support this. I don't know how, I think that with this happening, probably more chickens in our neighborhoods and all. I have seen some free roaming in East Hill, which concerns me a little bit, but I will be supporting this today. Thank you.
Okay. I think I've got a pretty good idea of the people that support it out there in the audience. Is there anybody in the audience who opposes this? Oh, okay, Ms. Mack's kind of iffy, iffy on it. What I'm going to do is ask that the pro side, pick your two or three best people to come up and make your pitch. I think we've heard from most of you before, but you get your say again today, and then Ms. Mack, I think, wants to maybe weigh in.
It looks like it's just me. I'm the head cluck today.
Okay.
You've heard from us, you've heard of our arguments and read our materials. I appreciate you taking the time to consider this. In terms of the nuisance ordinances, someone mentioned about the animals. We don't have any problem with the chickens being put underneath that ordinance as well. We want them to be kept responsibly. We think limiting the number to eight, banning chickens and so forth, is a good way to ensure that that takes place. We're here to answer questions and happy to do so, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mack.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Actually, mine is questions about code enforcement or enforcement of this code, because it is a far improved code, and I really don't have a problem with chickens. What I have a problem with, as we all do, is our irresponsible persons who don't take care of their property. And so there's always the possibility of an irresponsible neighbor who violates this new ordinance when it is passed. So my question is, if I may, you know, give you a scenario, and this is really a question for staff from Mr. Wineke, you know, in terms of how we're going to enforce. Suppose I have a neighbor move in. There is a six-foot-high wooden fence, you know, which is allowed, you know, between our properties, and I can't really see what's in the backyard, but, you know, it begins to sound like there are way more than eight chickens. I can't see that, so I can't call and attest to the fact that, you know, I can see ten chickens, I can see twelve chickens. What ability is code enforcement going to have on private property to investigate my possible complaint and enforce this? You know, that's my question. You know, what kind of enforcement can we have in the case of someone who may be being an irresponsible chicken owner? Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds.
Ms. Mack, it'll be investigated like all code complaints are, and you're very familiar with our staff, you're very familiar with our officers. You know, we will respond the day we receive the complaint, and we'll verify through the property owner, through the tenant, or with the assistance of the neighbors, what's actually going on next door.
May I follow up a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wineke and I have been tangling with a different problem. And if you have an irresponsible neighbor, and you go up and ask this neighbor, "Is this what you're doing?" That neighbor can easily lie. So the question is, what can, you know, you know, if I have said, "I think he's got twenty chickens, I think he's got a lot." You know, this is in the backyard. I don't believe that Mr. Wineke can go and count the chickens. And if the, if this property owner says, "No, I only have eight chickens," or "I only have six chickens," what happens then?
You're correct, Ms. Mack, and we'll do the best of our ability, but you have to have a preponderance of evidence. And no, we can't trespass this in any law enforcement agency. But you can't draft an ordinance that is a cure-all for any violator, as you well know.
Well, then, let me suggest something that, if I may, that I, before this particular very good ordinance came through, as I talked with Councilwoman Myers, something that I was going to suggest when I didn't know what was going to happen. And that is perhaps a permitting process that is not, that is as little burdensome as possible. But remember, the people most affected by urban farmers are three, at the most, three adjacent neighbors, one on each side and one to the rear. And how burdensome would it be to have a permitting process that has to be annually, you know, renewed, where that process requires the neighbor who wants to have chickens to go to each of his or her neighbors and get in writing that that neighbor has no objection to the chickens? A possibility. You know, it provides a little closer enforcement because, I will tell you that because of the inability to go verify what someone tells you at the front door, there may be violations. And thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, I've got Ms. Weeks, Mr. Townsend, and Ms. Myers, and Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm glad Ms. Mack came and spoke, because I'm in complete support of this ordinance today. I think it's a wonderful improvement, but my concern is, is that we may have to revisit this issue, and there may need to be a permitting process down the road if the one major change here is free roaming instead of in a coop. And I know of an issue right now where the person did not keep a coop at all. These chickens are right underneath the neighbor's window, so they're woke up, waking the person up, even though they're not, they're roosters. It's a part of that neighbor's daily life, and that's not what I think is intended by the responsible chicken farmer. So I don't know if there is a twelve-month review of the complaints that do come in and that we discuss this further a year down the road. I'm not saying that we add permitting at this point, but there's municipalities that, I brought it up the first time, I said, "Why eight chickens?" Because all the reports I saw was three to five is plenty for a single-family home, for the people in it consuming a dozen eggs apiece a week, or whatever, that three to five is enough. We're giving eight, so that's a concession, I think, as far as that goes. But the issue may be bigger than we realize of this free roaming, because of the situation I know of now, and that that may come up. The nuisance and the odor part of the ordinances in other places may take care of some of it. But like Ms. Mack had said, what is our enforcement mechanism for this? Calling 311? Code enforcement doesn't have permission to get in the property. How we may be able to take care of that. So I think it's something that we need to be aware of and ready to discuss within a year's time, or six months if we see it become an issue. But I'm glad that she brought it up, but I support it as it stands today. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Section four two one, and you added, "Slaughter or kill for other than medical or public health reasons." Person can't raise a chicken to wring his neck and eat it. Is that what you're saying? Like they used to do years ago, when they raised chickens?
No, sir, not with that added language, and that was a particular sentence that Councilwoman Myers wanted.
So a lot of these folks who raise chickens for their own personal thing and to eat, they can't do that with this?
No, sir.
There are some folks that do that, you know.
I like chicken myself, sir.
I used to try to do it, but the chicken would get up and run. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Myers, Dr. Wu actually had asked first. Dr. Wu.
We're laughing over here because Councilman Myers said, "Don't ask, don't tell." Mr. Wineke, how long have you been in code enforcement?
Eighteen years, roughly, sir.
And this is just, you know, to help me in my own mind. How, have you had, in those eighteen years, how many complaints have you had been called to that there was excessive chickens?
Excessive chickens? None to my knowledge. Chickens in violation of the current ordinances, it's written, a handful.
Okay. So my point is, is that we may be putting something in a place that we may visit later, but right now, it doesn't seem to be a, and I understand that the prior ordinance had no limitation.
That's correct.
You could have a hundred, a hundred if you wanted, so. But you've never, in those eighteen years, have been called because somebody had too many?
No, sir, and like any ordinance, I think it's a good ordinance. We've worked with both citizens, Councilwoman Myers, with council input. You can always change it down the road. If y'all get a preponderance of phone calls, chickens are going everywhere, then we can certainly readdress it.
And again, I'm asking the question so I don't know the answers to it, and I appreciate your answers very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Myers.
Well, Dr. Wu raised a very good point. I'm glad you asked Mr. Wineke that question. Here we have an ordinance right now that allows unlimited number of chickens, but he's only had a handful of complaints in eighteen years about a handful of chickens, or about an unlimited number of chickens. I just don't know why this is a big deal. By the way, this also applies to ducks, geese, guineas, turkeys, and I think peacocks. I don't know if people wring necks of peacocks, but anyway. I feel that we're making a big deal out of nothing, really, because I just don't see where hens pose a threat in terms of noise. You made the statement that you have a neighbor who is bothered by roosters. Well, this actually outlaws roosters, so I think that any noise problems should be greatly abated. And also, let me remind you that these types of animals are far less dangerous than dogs and cats. I have never had anyone complain about being attacked by a hen. Or, even though it's possible, maybe with a rooster, but a hen, generally not. I don't have to carry a stick with me to beat off attacking hens when I walk my neighborhood. You don't have to worry about them attacking the birds that are feeding in your feeder. They're not going to do that. So I would like to call the question, and I'm sorry, I won't call the question because my friend over there has something to say.
Mr. Spencer.
I'll just, I'll be brief. Thank you. Certainly, I appreciate Diane, Ms. Mack's suggestion of offering some form of oversight on the part of our staff through a permitting process, but here's what I fear, is that the chicken-loving resident could, well, or the neighbors could exercise unreasonable influence and control over their chicken-loving neighbor. And basically, I, so I don't want to add any more burden to the staff regarding permitting that utilizes or invites neighbors to weigh in. And finally, I think what Diane Mack is suggesting is that changing, or perhaps expanding on the good fences, make good neighbors, to read, "Good chickens make good neighbors." So I do support.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, the, this question's been moved. We need a second for that, or?
Second.
Second, okay. So we're voting on the end debate. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, okay. So that's eight to one. Debate has been closed. Now we're voting on the question itself. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. That passes eight to one. All right. Parks and Recreation Board, that City Council approved the ordinance revising section six dash two dash one of the code of the city of Pensacola, increasing the number of recreation board members to nine, and providing language to incorporate the intent of the city to have equal minority and minority representation on the board.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Pratt.
I just was wondering, does anyone remember why we increased it in 2010? Was it again to give a chance to make sure we had?
I have no recollection of that. You and I were on it together, but I have no recollection. Okay. Ms. Myers.
Yes. I have some questions regarding this revision to this board. I support, I don't have a problem supporting the increase in the numbers, but this is what I do have a problem with. Last year, I brought up an ordinance to require diversity on all of our, all of our boards, commission, and authorities, and it did not pass. So here we have one board that we're going to require minority diversity on. And the reason this concerns me is because I think that we should require it on all of our boards. And I would like to go back and revisit an ordinance that addresses all of our boards, commission, and authorities. Why just this one board? And so that's, would be my approach to this, is to expand the number on the board, but to bring forward again the ordinance that I proposed that would address diversity on all of our boards.
Okay, and, you know, when we get down to the end of the meeting, if you want to bring that up, we can do that. But right now, we're discussing this ordinance.
Well, I will support this, but I will bring up at the next, under new business, that we adopt an ordinance that addresses all of our boards
Okay, that, that, that.
in a similar manner. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Wu.
What would happen in a case where you could not find a minority that was interested in the board?
That is, that's interesting. I've pondered that myself.
Because does this say then that because you're not a minority, you can't serve on that board?
Yeah. Mr. Gerald.
Well, I want to say, first of all, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Ms. Myers, I want you to know that when you bring that second motion up, I will certainly support it. I agree with you. However, I have to agree with the President at this point that we're dealing with this particular ordinance, but I will support you a hundred percent. And to Dr. Wu, don't worry about us finding minorities. That'll be, I'll assume that is my job. We will, we will find them to serve on these boards, because as Ms. Myers is pointing out, it's something that perhaps we should have done long ago, but since we have to do it by ordinance, let's just make sure that we handle this one, and that will open the door for what we plan to do in the future, to make those opportunities available to all citizens of the City of Pensacola. And I'll work with you, Dr. Wu, to find those minorities and women, and I think that was a part of your, you know, race and gender would be our consideration. So, we'll work toward getting that done, but if we can, I'd appreciate the council's support to move forward with this particular one, and at the appropriate time, we will address the others. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Wu. Mr. Weiss. I thought I'd say your share.
To address Councilman Wu's question, I wonder if it would make sense in the language to change it to, from saying, the council should select from among the best qualified persons, those persons, from maybe to, from among the best qualified nominated persons, because clearly, the people who are willing to serve might not always be the best qualified. There are probably a lot of people who would be better than the ones that are willing to step up, except they just weren't willing to on their own. And so, maybe if we added that, that would at least give us some of that flexibility that, you know, we were presented this slate. We couldn't nominate a Native American out of this slate because we had none.
Just maker of the motion support adding that language.
As long as that was what was intended by staff, and I didn't do research on it, I'm just making the motion, so...
Well, so, you're...
I'm fine.
Okay, you're fine with that. I've got a question for you, though, Mr. Messer, is I think we're on good ground here because we're using the term minority, which includes women and other defined minority groups out there. If we were to do it on race alone, then we'd have a problem with the Supreme Court. Is that right? But as long as we keep it minority, okay. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to point out that if you look at, under E, the second paragraph, it specifically says, it has an exception if minority persons cannot be recruited. So, it does actually deal with the situation where there are no minorities that want to be with a particular organization.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you. Any comments from the audience, public? All right. Please vote. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. I presume you voted yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Recommendation that city council affirm the final ranking recommendation of the audit committee, and that contract negotiations begin with the top-ranked firm, Warren Averett LLC, Warren Averett O'Sullivan Creel Division, Pensacola, Florida.
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, and a member of the public would like to address.
I'm Ron Jackson, President of Salt Marsh, Cleveland, again. You have in your packet of information our protest regarding the rankings, and I just have to say that I appreciate the work that the audit selection committee did. However, the rankings did not follow the RFP, and I will not read this protest to you. It's in your package. We will rank the highest firm if you look at the ranking system that was outlined in the RFP. And the committee decided to go back and rank on a system of one through four those proposals, and in doing so, created a tie. When the tie was created, they interjected information that was not part of the criteria of the RFP in determining a tiebreaker. Typically, if you're going to break a tie, you would go back to the firm that had the highest score, which we clearly had the highest score when you rank the firms according to the RFP process. But they interjected our longevity as auditors of the City of Pensacola. Wasn't part of the criteria, but if you're going to consider that, we have been doing the work of the city for many, many years, and I think we've done a pretty good job in being professional, delivering, et cetera. I recall earlier in my career, when the city got its first certificate of achievement in financial reporting from DFOA, we were there. We helped get that certificate for you. As a matter of fact, there was a resolution that was passed by the city council commending our firm for that work. However, you know, that has been interjected in here, and, you know, it was a tie that was broken with information that wasn't even criteria in the RFP process. That is outlined, I think, very, very well in the, in the information you have there. If the tiebreaker had been, that was outlined on the scoring form, had been used, we would have won again, and we would have been ranked number one. That tiebreaker information was such that, that the firm with the highest number of ones and twos ranking, and even in the system that was used, would have won. We were won again. So, we won it based on the gross score. We should have been ranked number one. Since that wasn't used, it went to another system that was created, and it created a tie artificially. That tie was broken with information that wasn't even in the RFP. We respectfully request that you, that you select Salt Marsh as number one, as we were ranked in the RFP. Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you. Ms. Mack, would you come up and explain?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it would probably be easier if there were specific questions. I hope council did read the memorandum from the committee, which fairly well outlined what occurred at the last meeting. And are there specific questions, or did you want me to summarize what's already in the memorandum?
Okay, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you. I noticed your little PS, or little note, that there was some, I think the term you used, imprecise ranking. And I looked at the total score, and as the gentleman indicated, it appears that his firm did, in fact, when you did a consolidation of all of the scores, that they ranked higher, number one. And then, when you did the individual, I think they also came out either one, or either, as he indicated, might have been a tie. Was the factor of the seniority or the longevity played any part, in your opinion, as relates to the final outcome of this?
Well, let me then, Councilman Townsend, since you have those questions, let me give some background. And the note from the chairman that was appended to that memorandum regarded, was regarding not imprecise ranking, but imprecise language in the RFP having to do with the mechanical scoring. In the language of the RFP, there is a system for, with criteria and maximum number of points within which we individually scored each firm based on their written presentation. What's imprecise in the RFP is that it does not specifically instruct any selection committee to base a ranking on the total scores. There, and some members of the committee interpreted as implied that the total of the mechanical scoring should set the ranking. Other members of the committee felt that it was open to the committee to do the ranking on some basis, even though the mechanical scoring, you know, gave what was an implied ranking. And we took a vote. At that last meeting, as you saw, you know, because of the different interpretations, the first vote was three to three, so the motion to change the rankings based on the mechanical raw scores failed. There was a second motion to stick with the original rankings, and that passed on a four to two vote. So, am I clarifying anything?
In just a moment on that, it actually failed on a three, three vote, and then there was a move to reconsider, and then that's when it became a four-two vote.
Right, okay.
A different motion. The first motion was to approve Salt Marsh. That failed three, three, and then the Warren Averett O'Sullivan Creel was a new...
That failed as well.
No, that one was the one that passed.
Well, it failed, but then there was a move to reconsider, and then it passed. I was at the meeting, so...
Just hard to remember the sequence of those votes at this point, so...
Well, and I think the move to reconsider was, is we had to have an auditor, you know, and so...
Councilman Townsend, did that clarify, or did that muddy things?
Yeah, I guess. I just failed to see it. How a firm was ranked first, and then ended up second, that's what I'm trying to determine.
Well, I guess I should explain. In the instructions from staff, as we began the process, based on the long years of experience of having these RFPs and rankings, we were advised by staff that it was, the fairest process was a two-step process, that we should do individual mechanical scores, and then use those scores to determine which, you know, what our individual scores showed were the first, second, third, and fourth-place scores. But then, when we came back together, what we would average was not the total of our mechanical scores, but the total of our ranking scores. I know, without a blackboard to show you what went on, this is really difficult. So, what we totaled and averaged were our one, two, three, four ranking, individual rankings, to come up with group rankings. When we did that, it created a tie. Now, what we did not know as a committee was that there was a, at the bottom of the one, two, three, four ranking sheet, there was a written instruction of how we were to break a tie. And how we were to break a tie, according to that, was to look at which firm had the most first and second-place rankings, and that would break the tie. In that case, that would have been Salt Marsh. The committee had a long discussion, and as you know what the vote was, they decided in the end not to do that.
So, notwithstanding that bottom instruction, they opted not to do that?
We did not know about that bottom instruction until we met at, to the last meeting. At the original meeting, we were not made aware of that, because we did not have copies of that scoring sheet.
So, I guess we would be considerably safe to say that possibly was some flaws in the ranking and reading process.
Councilman, there, as someone said, this process has been snake-bitten from the beginning, first from the, you know, the RFP going out without a committee having written it, and so on and so forth. So, there have been problems all along the way. And I would tell you, it is embarrassing to have chaired a process that had these many problems, I will say, yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Wu.
In the comment, it's not directed towards you, but in general, because I feel the need to make it. Earlier, I saw the council go on a righteous indignation on an automobile auction, where a lady who had the lowest bid was rejected. And there were screams and howls, and how could this happen to this person who had worked for the city for thirty-six years, who had the lowest bid, and then lost the contract? And it seems to me, and perhaps maybe only me, a little hypocritical, then to turn around and do almost the same thing in reverse to another organization that's been dealing businessless all those years. If I look at the numbers, they're obviously top-ranked. Then the question then becomes, well, if you weren't going to use the ranking, why in heavens even have a ranking? I mean, the question is, really, if you're not going to have a ranking, why would you sit there in a room and rank these folks? Then if you take the tiebreaker, both, Salt Marsh and the other group, both came in with a ten. Well, if you took the ten and added to both numbers, number one still would re-ranked number one. I mean, if you use mathematics, they say numbers don't lie. There's no way you can make those numbers different. I mean, if you had the highest number, you had a second vote and took those numbers and added it to it, they would still be number one. And I'm not being critical, all I'm saying is, is we sat there and screamed and yelled about the auctions, and how unfair that was. And to me, I don't see where this was any more fair.
Okay, Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to clarify a little bit about the ranking versus, or the numbers versus the ultimate ranking. One thing that never, we never pursued as an audit committee was, there was an option that after you did the ranking, to get what they said in the RFP as the technical score, you could have oral arguments or other things. And so, as I understood it, the technical score was only a part of how you ranked the firms, because you could then go and have oral arguments or other things. And so, when I was part of the committee, when we got to the sort of tiebreaker conversation, I said, well, we are, you know, we're at this point not inviting the firms in for oral arguments, because we weren't sure that they would offer much, but we were having our own internal oral arguments to help us cement our ranking. And so, that's where I think we were following a legitimate process. Unfortunately, I think there were just maybe some wording errors in various places that really threw everything awry. And so, I think that everything was done in what can be perceived as a legitimate way. It's just, it wasn't absolutely clear in the language presented. And so, I, it was very flawed in a lot of ways, but I wouldn't say that we were doing something inherently wrong. I think that having that option of oral arguments meant that those rankings were a way for us to at least get to a point of saying, okay, where do we go from here? Thank you.
Ms. Myers.
I just have a couple of questions. One, the RFP referred to in Salt Marsh, in the letter from Salt Marsh, is the RFP that the city staff drafted, right? Is that the RFP? I'm looking at...
Ms. Mack.
Councilwoman Myers, yes, yes. The RFP had already been distributed, and the proposals had already been received by the city before the audit committee was in effect.
Okay. Now, my second question is, according to the protest from Salt Marsh, they claim that the deciding factor in denying them the contract is their longevity. Is that true? I'm trying to just find out what specific thing... I'm trying to just find out what specific thing, besides the scoring and the technical score and the ranking, what was the deciding factor?
In the discussion, which the committee held at the point that, well, let me back up. So, we did the averaging of the rankings, and we had a tie. And not having the scoring sheet in front of us, which provided an objective way to break the tie, we asked staff, we turned to staff and said, what do you recommend in terms of how we break the tie? We were advised to have a discussion, as Councilwoman Pratt suggested, you know, that all part of it, to have a discussion. And those of us who had one firm as our top one, and those who had others, you know, to present our various cases and our various arguments, you know, what we particularly liked about the firm that was our first-place firm. And two of the committee members, as I recall, specifically had a problem, felt that the longevity of the Salt Marsh firm weighed in their assessments of what was or was not a top-ranked firm. Those were people who had ranked other firms as their top-ranked firms, and not Salt Marsh. And in part, it was on the basis of their longevity, yes. But that was not a unanimous of the committee. That was in the discussion from a couple of committee members.
Well, I want to thank the committee for all of the work you've done. It was certainly a very difficult task, and confusing, and trying to straighten out what was a mess. However, I do have a problem with if longevity was a consideration, that I have a problem with, because I just think it's not fair. I mean, that's just my, you know, I mean, I don't think we should penalize people just because they've been around a long time, and I have a little problem with that, so.
Mr. Story, wait just a minute. Mr. Spencer, Mr. Story wanted to respond, if you can wait.
Oh, you mean Mr. Jackson?
Jackson. Ron Jackson. Jackson, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no problem.
I know Mr. Lister, and I'm used to seeing Mr. Story with him, so.
Well, you know, part of the longevity issue, longevity was known when folks went through and scored us individually. People went through and scored us and signed their scorecards, and that had already been taken into consideration in their scores. To go back and use it again against us, number one, it wasn't even in the criteria. But if they had an issue with it, they had it in that score already. So, you know, that just doesn't add up, if you will, in accounting terms, to what should have been done. We believe that everything that should have been considered was considered in those raw scores. It is a method that is used by a number of municipalities in our region, and it is a method that a number of the firms that are in this RFP process are familiar with and have certainly taken work that has been sent their way as a result of this raw score being used. And I will just point out to you that in your letter that you have there, that relates to our protest, the language there says that the committee will combine the scores, not may or should combine the scores, in this ranking process. So, I think the committee followed the proper procedure up to a point. I've been back, I've been to the audio recordings and listened to those audio recordings, and certainly, a very major factor that was expressed in that first meeting was our longevity. You know, I'm sorry, I just can't see where doing a good job for a long time should count against you. And it's frustrating to me to see that we are ranked first in the growth score, and we don't get it. And then we go to a tiebreaker, and other things are interjected. And had the rules been followed that were on the tiebreaker summary sheet, we'd have gotten it again. And so, two strikes, and we don't get it either time. I just request that you consider the raw score ranking.
Mr. Spencer?
Thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Jackson for, I think, providing to the best of his ability somewhat of an objective summary of what occurred for those of us that were not sitting on the committee. I feel like I have a very accurate depiction of the sequence of events that happened at the committee level. It sounds to me like they had reached a fork in the road, and there was, there was a staff directive that maybe offered an influence that otherwise, I think that the system and the ranking was solid. It was in place, and it sounds like they hit this fork in the road, they looked to the, committee looked to staff. Staff gave some indication of what way to go, and I have to say, I don't agree with the results that the committee chose in terms of the process, and I want to compliment, I do, I want to compliment Diane Mack, who is obviously one of our most outspoken defenders of the implementation of a flawless process. And here we have this chairperson, Diane Mack, who, if I think, if there was ever a reason to maybe be absent today, it might have been today, but Diane Mack has stood up here and admitted to, shared with all of us, that this is not a moment where she considers this to be where she shines as a chairperson. And I know how much she means that. And so, I want to thank her for that, because the process was flawed, in my opinion. The total raw scores, the mechanical scores, that resulted in a seemingly contradictory ranking or selection, to me, are apparent. And in all instances, here we are, trying to procure professional services for auditing, you know, which is so ironic, that ultimately, it sounds like oral arguments, which invites subjectivity as being part of the grading mechanism, ended up being a weighing factor, most particularly pointing to this longevity issue. So, for that reason, I think I have enough evidence in front of me to share with others my strong opinion that, although I know that members of the team that was recommended, I feel that they too, and Mr. Jackson did a good point, I think they too have participated in a process of much greater unflawed objectivity, a grading system, and would certainly understand that without some of this unique opportunity to have a subjective-oriented, subjectivity-oriented discussion, would recognize where they fall out in the grading. Thank you.
Yeah, in a moment, there's a gentleman from the public that, state your name, please.
Yes, my name is Jack Riewell, and I'm an owner, member of Warren Avery, O'Sullivan Krill. And it's first, just comforting to know that with the out-of-town competition, we had two good local firms that scored so high in the process, and each firm is clearly capable of doing the work. I would like to point out that perhaps a reason for not using a growth score is oftentimes, all it takes is one high vote to push a decision for one firm, or one low vote to arbitrarily push it against a firm. And sometimes in scoring, that's why a high and a low are tossed out. And even, we were very close in the scoring, and if you tossed out the high and the low, we would be ahead by two points. So, I just toss that out for consideration. We've been doing audits for over 30 years. We currently do 11 cities and three counties, and clearly have lots of resources and expertise that would enable us to do the audit. We appreciate the work of the committee and all the diligence they did, and I believe they did a good job, and they struggled with the decision. But we would ask that you just accept the recommendation from the selection committee and negotiate the contract with Warren Avery, O'Sullivan Krill.
Okay. Dr. Pratt, very, very quickly.
I just wanted to clarify one part of all of this, that I believe, and my memory is flawed, but I do remember that Ms. Mack and myself both were some who mentioned the longevity. Then, when we reconvened after all of this, you know, we were very conscious of it, I think. I mean, I don't, I can't speak for her, but I was conscious of, well, gosh, you know, I really did go where I shouldn't have, and so, and she and I were the dissenting votes on this recommendation. And, but the CPA who was on the committee was adamant that that had played no role in his decision-making, and the other citizens that were part of it really said that wasn't even part of our decision-making. And so, while it was unfortunate that that aspect got brought into it, I think that those who didn't consider that aspect still wanted to recommend Warren Avery to this council. And so, it was a very interesting adventure, and there were a lot of moving parts that make this a very hard decision for this council. Thanks.
Okay. It's, yes, sir.
A minute ago, I was fairly vocal with my remarks, but I also think it's very important to follow up, that I also, as Councilman Spencer said, appreciate the work of the committee. It was hard work, and you all decided to set up and do it. And I admired you all for doing it. And although I may have a disagreement with the outcome, it has no detraction from my admiration for the time and effort that you all put in to come up with your decision. I'm simply saying that I don't necessarily agree with it, but it doesn't detract from my appreciation for your hard work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. DeWes?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I tried not to speak today, but I do feel it's important that we not lose sight of a few things here. I see that a few council members are pretty upset about an issue that they perceive. We, as a council, were asked to carry over the existing auditor without putting out the RFP, and that's when this discussion began. We gave instruction to staff to develop, or to follow the process. When that was flawed, and we weren't adhering to state law, that's when this got really messy. And this committee came together, and even with the cloud storm above their heads, endeavored to do good work. I've heard comments from the committee members today that you stand by what the vote was, the concern about longevity was the two no votes. So, that is not what's the issue here. When you look at an auditing endeavor, this is our audit as a council, and we have to have an independent auditor. And that comment of longevity is simply one that you need to maintain that independence, so we must at least have an RFP process in place. And that's where that ends. It's not that someone that for decades has been doing good work for the city doesn't deserve to. So, I hope you can see past that. The comparison that you're making with the other situation with the auctioneer, I think, is a totally different concept and a totally different decision, where it was a mayoral decision, and not a decision of staff or of a committee that council had enlisted to do this hard work. So, again, it sounds like this committee stands behind their vote, and I will stand behind them today. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, please, just very briefly.
Yeah, just very briefly. Mr. President, thank you very much. Obviously, I don't have a dog in this fight, unless, of course, we're going to say that somehow these decisions are not analogous between the auction service and this particular issue. They are exactly analogous. The only difference is, is that you had a committee making the decision at one point, and you had the mayor making it on the other.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, I'm going to try to wrap this up here for a bit. I may have to have the city attorney help me out on this. Florida statute's pretty clear on this. We can either accept or reject. We can't reach down and go to number two. And I just want to do a mea culpa here. There's a couple of, and I've supported Salt Marsh all along, and you have my apologies that we are where we are today. At the last committee meeting, I voted with Dr. Pratt and Ms. Mack, you know, for Salt Marsh. And, or into the process that would have ultimately ended up with Salt Marsh. Have high respect for the other firm, but at the end of the day, you were the guys that I'm most comfortable with. I was the one that moved to reconsider that vote, and went with the other option, because I felt like we had to have an auditor. We'd been through this process. It had been snake-bitten right from the very beginning. And I know I fuss at council members by getting off topic here a little bit, but I'm going to make this one really quickly, is some of the biggest screw-ups we've had in the press in the six years I've been on council, or six or seven RFP processes, that has just been absolutely, totally hosed. And I think the mayor needs to take a look at that department and remedy it. And I'm not saying it should cost anybody any job, but that, you know, that there needs to be a little tighter rein on, perhaps, on some staff in the processes. And so, you guys have my apologies, and it's no offense to O'Sullivan Krill. I'm a big, big fan of that firm. But we can either accept the committee's recommendation, or we can reject it. If we reject it, then we'd probably have to put ourselves into a vote continuing Salt Marsh for at least one year, and then, you know, just start this audit process, the selection process again. I know it, I know it looks terrible, it looks sloppy, but that would be my recommendation to do that. Ms. Myers?
Yes, I just want to say that I'm really troubled by this. You know, Salt Marsh is a corporation that has the right to redress its grievances to the government. They have filed a grievance here. And I find that their grievance has merit. And I don't feel that I would be comfortable with myself approving the audit selection at this point in time, because I just cannot put my finger on what was the deciding factor that tipped the scale in favor of another company other than longevity. And I do feel compelled to listen to a citizen, a business, that exercises their right under the Constitution to address their grievances to the government. And I believe that this grievance has merit.
So, the motion on the floor is to accept the committee's recommendation, and so you can either accept or reject that.
Is it moved? Did we properly move a second?
Yes. Yeah, Mr. DeWes made the motion, and I think Ms. Myers seconded it.
Okay. I just wasn't sure.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of accepting the committee, I want to show hands here, accepting the committee's recommendation, please raise your hand. Okay, one, two, three. All opposed? That fails on a three-six vote. Yeah, Pratt, Johnson, and DeWes, the fours. Okay. So, what we're going to have to do is, at the end of this meeting, is have a discussion where we go from here. And I'd ask the attorney, can we retain Salt Marsh for the following year so that we, without a vote on part of the council? Is that a decision that the mayor's office would be able to make themselves?
I'm going to ask Mr. Barker to address that issue, but my answer, and I defer to Mr. Barker, is that the CAFRA will never be submitted with the timepiece we have unless we continue the present auditor for this fiscal year's audit and have a do-over on the RFP.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. And legal counsel is correct, at this point, we really don't have much of a choice other than to- At this point, we really don't have much of a choice other than to extend the contract of Salt Marsh for a year in order to make sure that we are properly in place to have all of the necessary state requirements.
You need an affirmative vote from us on that?
Yes, sir. I would like an affirmative vote from council.
Okay.
I'll move that we approve Salt Marsh for a one-year continuation.
Okay. Second. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the committee for all their hard work. They had a tough situation. They did the best they could. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Mack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have one further request, I did have a request from the committee, which I did fail to put in the memorandum. The Audit Selection Committee actually at its last or previous to last meeting asked the indulgence of the council and asked that it be dissolved. The members of the committee wish no longer to serve, so I am formally asking the council to dissolve the committee. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wees moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. So, thank you, gentlemen. All right, let's, Mr. Mayor.
Or City Administrator. Thank you, Mr. President. First thing on the mayor's portion of the agenda is recommendation, excuse me, subject tentative millage rate fiscal year 2013. The recommendation is that city council set the tentative fiscal year 2013 millage rate for the city of Pensacola at 4.2895 mils and for the downtown improvement district at 2.0000 mils, and authorize the mayor to set final levies in compliance with the new property tax reform regulations. Further, that the mayor may administratively adjust the final adopted millage rate upon receipt of the final valuation if the city's final gross year, excuse me, current gross, current year gross taxable value is reduced by more than 1%. Finally, that the first public hearing on fiscal year 2013 millage rates be held on September 5, 2012, at 5:15 p.m. in council chambers.
With your pleasure. Counsel.
Second.
Move second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close it. Unanimously. Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Next thing on the mayor's communication and actions is reimbursement resolution stormwater projects. The recommendation is that city council adopt the reimbursement resolution allowing the city to repay itself for expenditures incurred for certain capital improvements, including stormwater projects. Further, that city council adopt the attached supplemental budget resolution to provide funding for capital improvements.
With your pleasure.
Move to approval.
Need a second?
Second.
I've moved in second. Discussion. I have one question. The supplemental budget resolution for capital improvement, is it necessary to be specific as it relates to what capital improvement, or is it just a wide-open broad statement?
Mr. Barker can address that. Mr. Vice President.
I looked for any specific ones, but I didn't see any when I looked, so I was just wondering whether...
Yes, sir. Mr. Councilman Townsend, the item is related to one that council did last time for the airport improvements of the Army Reserve property, so that's what they will be used for.
Those ones that listed already?
Yes.
Question from council, audience? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And I guess I need further clarification on that, because as this reads, it says all various stormwater projects. How is the airport project? Just clarify, it's not a stormwater project?
That's correct. The item that I was referring to, that it related to, is last council meeting, you approved some items for the airport and the Army Reserve property. As part of that purchase, the city general fund will be receiving 3.3 million plus $200,000 for demolition costs that we received. Those dollars since their bond proceeds need to be spent on capital projects. And as you're aware, the transfer of funds that is made from the general fund to the stormwater capital project fund or unrestricted funds are general fund dollars. So, what we're doing is taking those general fund dollars that are going over to the capital project fund, replacing those with the money we're going to receive from the financing for the airport, the airport reserve property. And therefore, they qualify, and then the general fund money will have unrestricted money.
So, it's not a reduction in any stormwater capital projects?
There's not a reduction. It's just...
It's just a trade-off?
Yes. Bond money versus the general fund money. Yes, ma'am. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The next thing on the agenda is award of continuing contracts, RFQ number 12-TAC-027, three-year contract for landscape architect services for various projects. The recommendation is that city council approve the award of contracts to Atkins North America Incorporated and Hatch-McDonald Florida Limited Liability Corporation for professional engineering services related to airport improvements at Pensacola International Airport for a term of five years.
With your pleasure. Second. I've moved second. Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, I was just wondering, what's the significance of doing it for five years? I don't know why we don't do things like this for three years. To me, to, I don't want to say handcuff, but for, to go longer than three years, I kind of have a problem with that right now. Could you tell me the reason we would go for five years?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Essentially, we just wanted to have congruency in the contract process and have a couple firms available. And if I may, I screwed up earlier. The actual subject line of this is award of a master agreement for engineering services for airport improvements. I was getting too confused.
Not landscape, yeah. I got a little confused.
So, sorry about that.
It's all right.
But, you know, there is no design term. You know, five years is the term that was reviewed and went out with the initial RFQ.
Can I make a substitute motion, Mr. Chair?
Before you do that, I'd like to raise one question regarding this. I noted that this RFP that was responded to, actually, it was awarded in June of 2011. Was this a year old, and why is it just getting completed now unless it's a typo? Am I correct? It is listed that this was, this was an action that was taken in June of 2011, and now we just get around to it?
And Melinda Crawford can help you with that question.
May I speak to that? The engineering service contract actually expired in 2008, and we've been utilizing the services of the city's engineering services since then. We went out for an RFQ in December of 2011, and because we had to modify the agreement and some other issues, we are now just at the point that we can bring this to you with, for the two engineering firms that we selected. We did go out for a five-year contract because, quite frankly, a great deal of our projects do extend out for a long period of time. Also, as you can see, we started this process in December of 2011, and we're just now at this process of having this approved. That's why we did put in for a five-year contract, sir.
Yeah, you know, I thought it was unusual that it took this long to complete that requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And I just wanted to add for a little clarification. Councilman Johnson was concerned about the three or the five-year, and I had actually, on behalf of council, was requested to do the process with the Public Works and Engineering for the five-year city contract, and I was also to sit on the one for the airport. And it was canceled. I also understood, because we had so many drastic changes because of budget cuts, that we decided these were the improvements we were doing, and the fuel tank farm was taken off. There were some things that were taken off and changed. It takes a great deal of work for these firms to put together their proposals, and to the amount of manpower it takes for them to do that part of it, and to present, and to go through that work. And I understood that it is a standard of five years. I can't refer directly to where that comes from, but that a great deal of work is put into that. And even from a staff perspective, so if the five years that Ms. Crawford pointed out for all the projects that are done at the airport isn't enough, I think that there's a staff component that we need to think of for review of all this, to make those decisions, and also the firms were asking to respond as well. So, I would like to see it stay at the five years.
Thank you. Over the years, I've had real concerns about these continuing contracts. Mike can look in the record. I felt that it just did not give other firms an opportunity to favor or compete. There might be some new ones coming in, but it appears that we constantly just doing these continuing, and I was advised that that's the way we do it, and that's the way we would like to continue to do it. But that's just the way I felt. Okay, comments? Yes.
Thank you. Well, I too have a problem with a five-year contract. I think that I have the same concerns that Councilman Townsend raised. It seems like to me that it really limits the ability of the city to allow other companies to bid on contracts. And I would like to ask, if you could, give me an example of a project that would go on for a long time, that would warrant having a five-year contract?
Your terminal construction project began design in 2006. We've just wrapped up that project in 2012.
Okay, so that basically sticks you?
Our runway extension, our runway extension and our runway construction project began in 1999. We completed it in 2008.
Okay, was that completed by the same company?
It was, because not only do we use them for the design, but we use them for construction management, project inspection.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes.
I would like to share that I understand the concerns, but I think that the kinds of engineering activities that our airport needs to do, there's only going to be a limited pool of qualified firms that are able to handle projects of that scale. So, I am comfortable with this contract, and also Councilwoman DeWes's comment, the amount of effort that it takes to write a valid proposal in, for something like this. I think that we should just, you know, a five-year contract seems like a reasonable amount, especially with two firms that it'll be able to switch between.
Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, I just, the two examples that Ms. Crawford gave us were actually longer than five years. So, if we're trying to make sure that we ensure that the five-year period takes into consideration these long projects, well, you know, that argument, I think, is kind of really not, you know, not valid, because they extend longer than a five-year contract. So, I'm not going to support this today. I'd like to see us do a three-year contract. The two examples she gave us, I believe she said 199 that ended in '08, so that's nine years, and I can't remember the other one now, but it was similar. So, I'm not going to support this unless we drop this down to a three-year. Thank you.
May I speak to that about the runway construction? The runway construction and the reconstruction project that we had, it requires a great deal of understanding of our airfield and other aspects of our operation. That was actually done with three different projects. During that time period, we did have a re, we did go out and reissue an RFQ, and the existing firm was re-selected. It was the same firm, but it did go under two RFQ processes. So, Mr. Johnson is absolutely correct in that it was longer than five years, but we did have an RFQ process in that time. And to be quite frank, because of the situation with the knowledge that was needed for that project, that's why the selection committee did select the existing one. That was RS&amp;H Engineering Design. But this project, we went out, we did not select the existing RS&amp;H. We were very fortunate that you had two companies here locally that had a great deal of aviation experience. This is not the standard design normally. They do require a great deal of specific knowledge about airports and airfields. And we were very fortunate that what we were proposing to you are two very well-qualified firms that are here locally, that are going to help us to save on cost, because there is not a travel or other aspect to it. Again, it took us from December of this last year to this point to be able to bring this to you, and that's why we were asking for a five-year. That is standard practice among the airport, and it is accepted among the FAA.
Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Please vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was yes. Sorry.
What were you, a a or no?
Yes.
I'm the only no. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Item number 10 on the agenda is award of continuing contracts, RFQ number 12-TAC-027, three-year contract for landscape architect services for various projects. The recommendation is that city council award three-year contracts with an option for two one-year renewals to the list of qualified landscape architect firms, and authorize the mayor to execute contracts in order to have a pool of qualified firms for design and consultation for landscape projects on an as-needed basis.
With your pleasure.
I move to approve.
Second.
I've moved in second. Comment, Councilwoman Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted clarification. I remember that in the MGT study, the pre-disparity study, that this was the kind of thing, one of the things that they recommended, that it helps to give some diversity to your contracts. But I understood that their recommendation had been that you basically have it a rotating list. Is this going to be a rotating list, or is it a, you know, a department, basically, you'll say, eenie-meenie-minie-mo, and choose which one they feel like working with?
Well, I, thank you, Councilwoman Pratt. I dare say that I've never seen staff go eenie-meenie-minie-mo. That being said...
Don't you both dare continue that.
Now, I have, but staff has not. This is a list of qualified firms, so essentially what staff will do is they'll make recommendations to the mayor based upon what the specific project is and where these individuals, firms' expertise lies.
So, there's not, I mean, because I understood that...
There's, I'm sorry.
They're all qualified for what we intend for them to do, so almost the expertise wouldn't... I guess I would be more comfortable if we had it be that it was a rotating list, and, you know, maybe, you know, you call up, you know, Joe Smith's company, and he says, "I'm slammed, I can't do it." Then you go to the next one. But a rotating list, I think, would ensure the diversity of usage that was sort of the intent that I understood from the MGT recommendation for this kind of process.
You know the comments? Audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close it.
Aye.
No.
No.
May I then make a substitute motion that we approve them, subject to them being a rotating list?
I don't, I don't have any objection, but if you want to explain...
I may have missed the vote.
Can we take the vote again?
Yeah.
I thought it was five when you...
I thought it was five in the favor.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it was three, three.
No, I've heard, yes.
Right, say it again.
The motion.
Say "all in favor" and we'll raise our votes.
To, I made a motion to, to, I concurred with the recommendation. The city council awarded three-year contracts with the option for two one-year renewals to the list of the qualified landscape architects as provided. That was my motion.
And what was the show?
And then I had a second.
Show of hands.
All right. And now...
Okay.
And now we got more votes.
Hmm, we're going to vote again?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
No, we, I'm going to ask the clerk what...
What was the vote?
What was the vote?
Three thousand and three hundred and fifty.
Yes.
Brad and Townsend.
Right.
Who else?
Myers, Townsend, we're deciding.
Myers and me.
So you had four yeses?
Yeah, you needed four yeses. You had three yeses.
So?
The prevailing side would have to move that we reconsider.
To bring in the prevailing sides, no.
Okay. The prevail.
There's a, how did, how?
Let's call Diane Mack.
Now, how did a tie vote happen with odd number here?
Wait, no, two were missing.
Oh, okay, two.
So there were six of us here.
So if, did you previously vote no, Mr. Dr. Wu?
He wasn't here.
He didn't vote at all. Okay. In order to reconsider, it would have to be somebody from the no side willing to move to reconsider.
And as...
I'll move to reconsider since Councilman Spencer is looking at me.
I second that.
Okay, so we got a motion and yes.
And I'll just, for those of you who were not here, I will make the point of why I argued to vote no on this was I understood the MGT pre-disparity...
Actually, that's going to have to be part of reconsideration.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay, right, we have to vote whether we will reconsider.
Yeah, because this is not, this part of it's not debatable or amendable.
Right, right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let, all opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. I made it easy. Now, Dr. Pratt, I recognize you.
All right, and I'll try to be brief. The MGT pre-disparity study made a case that you want to have a pool of qualified firms that you rotate through so that you can have, enhance the diversity of contracts with the city. The proposal at this point is a pool, but then they can be chosen, "Eeny, meeny, miny, moe" by the staff, whatever reason they have. And that is the kind of thing that the pre-disparity study was saying, that that's where you start not getting the diversity. And so I was, I was, as you all were walking in, I was going to make an alternate motion since it had failed, that what we want to do is say that we approve these firms if they are cycled through as opposed to just chosen based on whatever preference a staff person had.
Okay. Ms. Myers?
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to support it. I have the same concerns that Councilwoman Dr. Pratt has. Also, just looking at these qualified firms, there are only three of them from Pensacola, I believe. There's one in Orlando, from Orlando, Fort Lauderdale, Destin, some distance away, and that concerns me. I really prefer to keep as many local firms contracted as possible. So I mean, I have a problem with this. I probably won't support it. I might change my mind Thursday night, but tonight I'm not going to support it.
Mr. Townsend?
Well, you know, in response to that concern, they did put out a RFQ, and 10 of the 11 people that submitted applications were on the list here. So that meant that they did have openness and transparency in terms of anybody who possibly would be willing to apply could. So that would trigger me to not have that much of a concern regarding the locality because it was wide open. No restrictions were listed in the RFQ, I don't believe.
Okay. All right, Mr. Reynolds?
Oh, yes.
I think addressed Ms. Myers.
Well, and that's exactly right. Mr. Vice President, the, there was no restriction in regards to a location for the particular firms. And, you know, we essentially ranked them as to whether or not they could be qualified. And so actually, Councilwoman Myers' point makes it even better argument for doing the pool as opposed to a rotating pool. Because if we were to do a rotating pool, then we automatically would have to have, you know, we'd have to go to Destin, we'd have to automatically go to Tallahassee, we'd automatically have to go to Orlando. And, you know, with it being a pool in which the projects can be looked at and determined who has the requisite expertise for that particular project, we're not hemmed in by, as a staff, to a location.
Okay. And by the way, on those suggestions, when you're reconsidering a vote, it is non-amendable. So, yes? I am going to support this recommendation, and I want to share some of my thoughts. I think Councilman Townsend did hit the nail on the head. This was an invitation that really provided open access for design-related firms from, throughout the region. And I just want to point out that I'm an example, or my profession is an example of one, that has benefited tremendously from the ability to electronically transmit and exchange collaborative design documents with consulting engineers. Our firm has done work in states throughout the country. It's a sort of a product, and that being intellectual capital, that has, is less restricted to geographic boundaries. And I, for one, want us to benefit as a community from being on the receiving end of the best in talent and intellect that we can procure. I think that the end result is the creation of a much better community that will ultimately invite more immigration, population growth. And I also want to remind everyone that these firms, while I certainly appreciate Councilwoman Pratt's intent, there will be projects that are more right-sized for these various respective firms. And who knows what sort of pots of money there will be that we will tap into that will result in project sizes or the differentiation of projects that will be best or better suited to these different firms. Not every firm is going to be, just as we spoke about, airport engineering is going to be appropriately equipped for every size project. I welcome the ability of our administration to make and to deliberate and make those educated decisions. And I trust that this will actually prove to, certainly to provide a variety because of different sized projects, different applications. I know in the design profession, there are certain projects that I just do not have, or our firm does not have the experience to do. And so anyway, I support it. Thank you. Okay. The clerk has just informed me that I fell one step short in this motion to reconsider. You actually have to state the motion again, that, you know, we voted to reconsider on it, but now we have to make the motion. All right. Mr. Spencer?
Move to reapprove the recommendation.
I move to reapprove. Aren't you second it? He's already done it. Oh, thank you. I thought that was just providing me some mentorship. I second it. Okay. Any more discussion? Ms. Myers?
Well, Councilman Spencer just convinced me to change my vote.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
See, that fails on an eight to one vote.
Passes.
Oh, passes, I just wanted to add, I'm sorry. Okay. Award of Continuing Contracts, okay.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next subject is approval of Escambia Consortium FY 2012-TAC 2013 Annual Action Plan for the City of Pensacola's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Act, H O M E, Programs. The recommendation is that city council approve the proposed Escambia Consortium FY 2012-TAC 2013 Annual Action Plan for the period of October 1st, 2012 through September 30th, 2013, which includes the City of Pensacola's use of Community Development Block Grants, CDBG funds, in the amount of $688,838, and, dollars, and Home Investment Partnership Act home funds in the amount of $229,611.
Move for approval.
Motion second. Discussion? Audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. President, the next thing on, next subject on our agenda is authorization to purchase critical infrastructure improvements encompassed in the Port Security Grant Program, PSGP. The recommendation is that city council award a contract to Advanced Control Concepts Incorporated, ACC, under State of Florida Contract Number EF 460, for upgrade and installation of a new security monitoring and access control system at the Port of Pensacola.
Move for approval.
Second.
Oh, discussion? Audience? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. President, the next subject on our agenda is Award of Port Security Grant for Fiscal Year FY 2011. The recommendation is that city council authorize the mayor to approve and accept the 2011 FEMA Port Security Grant, which will assist in the replacement of the Inglewood Communications Tower. Further, that city council adopt the attached supplemental budget resolution to provide funding for the replacement of the Inglewood Communications Tower.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Audience? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven zero. Mr. Spencer absent for the vote, and Mr. Gerald. Item 13.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next subject on our agenda is lien waiver for affordable housing. Excuse me. The recommendation is that city council waive five liens totaling $846.46 against the property located at 2615 North Sixth Avenue.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Audience? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Mr. President, the next subject on our agenda is a request for license to use at 321 South Palafox. The recommendation is that city council approve the request for a license to use a portion of the Palafox Place right-of-way adjacent to property located at 321 South Palafox Place. And I have some comments in regards to some communications with the DIB prior to a vote of...
Okay, so we need a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Is this going to have any food served at this location, or is it going to be just alcohol?
Councilman Hall, at the present time, I think their intent is to have alcohol only. They did indicate at the planning board meeting, at which this was originally reviewed, that they do intend to add food at some point, possibly. I did need to also let council know, planning board met last week, and under old business, they raised this issue again. And they voted this time unanimously to forward their recommendation of support for the item in its entirety to committee. They asked staff to pass that along to you. It was not carried over as an agenda item. They did bring it up under old business.
Well, I'm not inclined to overturn, not take the planning board's recommendation, but this is what I had in mind for downtown. But that's, Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And you all have, you've all seen, delivered to your email inboxes, a letter to Ms. Morris from Franklin Kimbrough, Kim Kimbrough, from the DIB. And I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. President, because I think that's also the consideration and the concern that the DIB also is currently undertaking. And in the course of this letter, frankly, the DIB has outlined some very, what I would have to say, reasonable thoughts in regards to the future of what we're allowing to be done on the sidewalks in, on Palafox. And, you know, just so you know, we're going to have staff take a hard look at this because the issues that are outlined by Mr. Kimbrough in his letter certainly are something that we need to give some good thought to. And includes such things as, you know, making sure that there's appropriate access, including handicap access along these sidewalks, and also some means of regulating over time. You know, in other words, it's not just a one-time grant, and then no matter what happens, you have it, but, you know, some real thoughtful processes, you know, for it to be reviewed over time. So regardless of what this particular council is looking to do with these next three items, staff will certainly be taking a look at this in a more in-depth, and also will take Mr. Kimbrough's suggestion in regards to seeing how some other cities have dealt with similar situations in the future. And you can expect to see some action from the mayor's office in that regard in the near future.
Thank you. Ms. Myers?
Yes, I'm trying to understand what we're voting for. It says in the summary that the planning board recommended approval of only a portion of the request on June 12th, and a five-to-one vote. The planning board recommended that the outswinging doors and planters be approved, but the outdoor seating area not be approved until additional time could be devoted. So is the mayor's recommendation that we approve the outdoor seating and, in other words, that we don't go by what the planning board approved?
The mayor's recommendation is that we, that you approve what the original approval was by the planning board.
Well, it's so, but they didn't approve outdoor seating, according to the summary here.
Yeah, I'm confused.
I'm confused. It says here, "The planning board recommended by five-to-one vote that the swinging door and planters be approved, but the outdoor seating area not be approved until additional time could be devoted to considering amendment to the city's regulations."
And that's exactly what the mayor's office will be doing in the near future.
But if I vote for this, the mayor's recommendation, I'm going to be voting for outside seating, correct?
Yes.
That's incorrect.
Pardon?
That's incorrect, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Mr. Spencer? Yeah, may I, for a point of clarification, I think this council, right now seated as committee, the whole, is being asked just to facilitate the continuation of this particular property owner's progress, construction, that is underway and has been permitted. And that is, as you just asked, as Councilwoman Myers asked, this is strictly allowing for the outswinging of the doors.
the outswinging of the doors, as egress doors and exit doors, and then followed by that, or in addition to that, the placement of planters. As the owner had pointed out, that placement of planters was necessary to prevent perhaps someone walking along the sidewalk unknowingly right into the path of an outswinging, outswinging door. Plus, it has been customary to, to the requirement of a license to use for an outswinging door on the rightofway has historically been done for decades. So that's what we are looking at. The planning board has conducted, as I shared in the CRA meeting, has conducted one workshop. Many different parties have been able to collaborate and discuss their various needs, concerns, as relating to mutual or shared use of a public rightofway. And at this point, we are, and I say "we," now I'm wearing my D I B hat, the D I B is a party that is sitting at that table with planning board and listening to concerns, recognizing that we want to be business-friendly, we want to expedite a process that brings much more, just like really the chicken ordinance, much greater clarity to the ordinance language that currently is very broad. Whether you are a balcony of a jewelry store that just has six columns, you pay the same fee, license to use, so your balcony can overhang a sidewalk as someone who sells product and service on that sidewalk. We've got, we've got work to do, but we're making progress. Yes?
And if I may, Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
Just to reflect on what Councilman Spencer has said, it is an incredibly broad ordinance, and he's exactly right. And that's why the D I B, in their particular letter to council, really, you know, has some good ideas about the shared use of the sidewalks. In other words, a license to use is not an exclusive grant to, you know, the wide sidewalk in perpetuity. We have to figure out what the boundaries are for shared use for both pedestrians, those that want to use it to sell things in their particular area as well, and make sure that we also comply with such things as ADA requirements. And so it isn't a discussion that we've had previously, and I guess you can call this a, we're victim of our success, and that's a good thing. But certainly, D I B has moved forward to start that conversation, and we certainly need to do that relatively quickly.
Councilwoman Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look forward to getting those changes out. I want to go back to exactly what we're approving. As I understood, the recommendation is that we approve the request to use blah, blah, blah. The request to use, I read that as the application we have in our agenda from O'Reilly's Pub. It's handwritten, and it says, "The purpose of use, doors to swing out and to have tables and chairs." So I would read that as, if we move this motion, we will approve what they requested, which is both the swinging doors and the table and chairs. And, but that's not what Mr. Reynolds has indicated that that recommendation meant. And so I'm confused by the language. And at minimum, I think we need to make sure that our motion is clear, so that we don't get lost.
The recommendation from the mayor's office is that you approve the original recommendation as the planning, as presented by the planning board.
As presented at the planning board, or as approved by the planning?
That was approved by the planning board in their original recommendation, correct.
And that was to only do the doors?
That's for the doors and the planters.
Okay, 'cause, and I guess I just, do you hear what I'm saying, is that the motion is that we approve the request, and the request I see in my agenda is from the owner, and it includes both the door and the tables and chairs. And so I guess, I just hope that whoever is the maker of the motion will clarify what the motion includes.
We probably need some clarification here, because when you look at, you got a sentence for the recommendation, but in the summary, it indicates that you got a portion of the placement of outdoor seating area, planters, outswinging doors for the building. And then it said, "The planning board recommended a portion of the request, that swinging, outswinging doors and planters be approved, with the outdoor seating area not be approved." So what we asking, what do you want us to approve?
Well, who made the motion and just clarify what we want to approve?
Just, can, can you clarify that, Ms. Ruhl?
Yes, sir. Once again, what we're asking you to approve, what is the request that was approved by the planning board in their first meeting, which is the swinging doors and the planters.
Okay, thank you.
I think if you look at the existing view, it helps you visualize what they want permission to do, and that is for doors to swing out. In addition, they're asking for planters, so people walking down the street will not be hit when the door comes. However, in the summary of what's in front of us, it plainly says that planning board recommended approval, swinging doors and planters, but the outdoor seating not be approved until additional things, so...
Until certain deliberation?
Right, so it says they're plainly, they're not approving the outdoor seating, but only the planters and the doors to swing out?
Yes.
Yes, and I mean, I was at that meeting, clearly, the planning, the planning board's intent was to separate the two until this was resolved. And I guess, our sitting now, Councilman Townsend sitting as president, as vice president, I'm curious if staff just, was this an erroneous, because this is confusing, but, and we, we...
If I could clarify again, with permission of the chair, the planning board at their meeting last Tuesday, I don't want them to accuse me of not relaying their message to this body. At the meeting that Ms. Reynolds is referencing, at their June meeting, they voted to approve all elements of their license to use request except outdoor seating. But then they brought the item up again last Tuesday at their July meeting under old business, and wanted staff to forward to this body that they now support the request in full, because they felt they had applied the rules inconsistently. So that was their most recent action. It was not an agenda item where this was brought back before them. It was just a motion that they unanimously voted on under old business, but I, they asked me to forward that to this body at the meeting on Monday.
This, okay, my comment on that is, I think it's very important what I just heard, a non-agenda item. So all of those people that, probably more than 40 people, that were participating in workshops about license to use, did not anticipate that this non-agenda item would occur. Am I correct?
It had been acted on the previous month.
Right, it had been acted on the previous month in the form of the language, the outswinging doors and the planters, with the full understanding that participants would diligently work on what they recognized was an issue with some complexity, but understanding there is different impact of, and different type establishments on, in terms of usage of rightaways. I sincerely believe that if, given the turnout of individuals that have been participating, had they known that there was going to be a revisit of that item, they would have voiced their concern. And I think it's very important.
Well, we could either send this back, if you think there's some misunderstanding, or either we can vote on this. Okay. Now, someone in the audience wants to speak. Did you want to speak?
Yes.
And then I'm coming, Larry, do you object?
Well, that's fine. I was going to make a substitute motion, but that's fine.
Okay. Yes, state your name.
My name's Patty Sonnen. I'm the owner of O'Reilly's. Last week regarding that, the planning meeting, they had, they specifically discussed the workshop that you are referring to, Mr. Spencer. And most of the people that were there knew a lot about the meetings, the workshops that they had. And they specifically said at that time that most of the groups that got together discussed the food, and they came to the consensus that the food really didn't make a difference whether you were selling food or not, because people are still going to go outside, and if they just want to order drinks, then they can just order drinks. It's not going to say you have to order food when you're outside. And that was the consensus that was reached amongst the people in the workshops. So they did do quite a lot of work, and that was why they reverted it last week. That was why they said, "What we did didn't make any sense, so we're doing it this way." At the same time, they approved the Boredacious Olive and Carmen's. So those are two that are going to be coming up for you as well. And I just feel there needs to be some consistency regarding this. We've got some that get approved, and then some that don't, and then it's, do they sell food? Don't they sell food? But in the interim, I'm sitting there with a business that I can't do anything at this point, because I can't open my doors. I can't leave people in and out. And to have the outside area makes perfect sense, because you'd have people congregating out there. If they want to have a cigarette, they can go stand outside and have a specific area where they're going to have a cigarette. And then we can go and clean it up, and make sure it's kept tidy. If we don't have a specific area, you're going to have these people loitering around, going out there and just hanging around. Now we've got a specific area that we can manage, and we can take control of that area. We can keep it clean. We can take those chairs in at night. So to me, that makes more sense than just having people randomly going out there and doing that.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, I was actually thinking about substitute motion before I heard this lady speak, and that was going to be that we approve the planning board's recommendation to, for the swinging doors and the planters at this time. But then, I'm not sure if that would be more appropriate. We could maybe deal with it that way. That would be my substitute motion, or that until the mayor's office had a chance to address the issues of this outdoor seating issue, which I know that we have some access issues, et cetera, that can we possibly give them a license of a period of time, a temporary license, to do business? I'm not sure what would be better, either a substitute motion, allowing the outswinging of the doors and the planters, and then address the outdoor seating at a later time, or just give them a temporary license for all of it. I'm not, I'm not sure. Anybody got any thoughts on that?
Let me have Mr. DeWes, next, and then Councilman Wu, and then you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And I just need clarification from staff, and I'm not going down a rabbit hole here, but item 17, we're actually considering a transfer of a license to use for a World of Beers that only serves beer. And I don't know if the restaurant before it, I mean, the bar, I didn't frequent it, so I don't know if they serve food. But they're asking for outdoor seating to be transferred from the previous license to use. So it's the exact same conversation, and it makes this lady's point, this business owner's point, that some are approved and some are not. So how easily are we going to say yes to that, when it's the exact same situation? It's just a couple blocks away.
Might be too separate.
Well, I just want a clarification from staff.
Because those other ones are dealing with transferring.
Yeah, and that's, and if I may, Mr. Vice President, that's an excellent point, frankly. Those are, those are established licenses that currently exist. Now, I think that that's also another thing that we have to look at. It's been granted, and so, you know, do we ultimately come back as a recommendation to this body and say, once the establishment has been sold, does that right then extinguish? And, you know, again, we're kind of the victim of our own successes here in the downtown area. We probably should have had this discussion maybe a year ago, but we certainly are aware of it now, and we're going to move posthaste to try to figure out what the parameters are to make sure everybody's taken care of. But it's a very valid point on Councilwoman Dewis's part. The only difference is, is that this is a transfer of an existing license.
But just so that's clarified, because I'm not clear if Blazoo's was just beer and wine or liquor, or if it actually had food available?
It had food.
Hmm?
It had food.
Okay, so then, the World of Beer does not have food. You can have food delivered from other locations to them, so they are selling beer, that's it. So we have an apple and an apple. We don't have an apple and an orange here. Whether it's a transfer or not, I think that is, that's the devil in the details here. So we need to be very careful what motions we're making.
Thank you very much. I agree with Councilwoman Dewis. We talk about being business-friendly. We want people to come down, and then somebody's down there, ready to open a business. And if I get my car and drive down Palafox, there's tables from one end of Palafox to the other. And all of a sudden, we come to this person, say, "Oh, I'm sorry, no tables." And I'm thinking, what's the rationale when you have, at the very beginning of Palafox to the very end, I mean, there's tables everywhere. And so I don't understand the rationale.
Okay, can we wrap up this conversation here now? Yes.
Okay, first of all, I have published subject public notices telling me that, that the rightofway, license to use rightofway for 321 will be a public meeting on January 12th. I don't know if anyone knows that this says January 12th. All of these that were mailed gave notice for wrong, wrong month regarding this particular one.
Check with the staff person that sent those out. I haven't seen the postcards.
Okay, well, here are my January 12th public meeting notices. But Councilman Wu, driving down Palaf, pardon me, as Councilman Wu pointed out, when he drives down Palafox, certainly there is an abundance of tables and chairs that he observes. That's, and I would suggest, that's very different than actually walking the sidewalks of Palafox and experiencing them. What I hope we can do, because there is such a marked difference in the behavior of a patron that is at an establishment, or typically, historically there is, than a patron that is ordering a meal, a full-service meal, and a glass or two wine or more, than someone that is just strict, what we are addressing is there are, there's a different behavior pattern that occurs typically with people that are just at an establishment to consume alcoholic beverages. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. What I'm trying to share is, it is a, typically, there is a different, I'll call it, impact that occurs eventually on that, in that rightofway area. What the workshop was, it was illuminating in that everyone recognized so much of that impact can be affected and controlled by the management, the eyes and ears, the operators of those establishments. This proprietor, the woman that is, that is invested in downtown bricks and mortar and intends to have a vibrant establishment, no doubt that's what we want. What we don't want is to perpetuate that blurry line, that, the blurring of the line, that depends on the stewardship of whatever management may be in place. Certainly, we have, again, that owner may provide for us and warrant with the sincerest of intentions to make sure that patrons are going to behave, and that they are going to observe a certain license to use footprint. In the workshop, what we began to establish is, other cities delineate them with barriers that provide for mom and dad to be able to feel very comfortable about sharing those spaces. And we just want to work out those details, and perhaps we can provide a 90-day sort of license to use and get underway.
And I guess I've been concerned as well on how long we give and what the termination, and especially if we come up with new standards, but I was just checking in the license to use with Blazoo's that we're going to convey later, assuming we do it, that the license may be terminated by the city without cause and for any reason by giving 90 days prior written notice to licensee. So I think... So I think that'll give us that kind of, okay, we, we, we're now, we've gone back, we've looked at all of our parameters, we want to only allow this, these need to have barriers, and, and then once we get all of that in place, we can then basically do a wholesale rescension and reapproval. I think that would give us the route we need.
Okay, we, everybody's talked at least twice on this.
What's the motion?
Either go approve it or not approve it.
What's the motion? Can we restate the motion? Because the recommendation, like you said, says one thing.
Okay, the recommendation that the council approve the request for a license to use a portion of Palafox Place Right-of-Way adjacent to the property located at 321 South Palafox. Then in the summary, it goes on, what the Planning Board recommended that you do, the planters and outswinging doors, and leave out, out the outdoor seating.
But the...
And that's what you're supposed to be voting on.
Okay, but the recommendation says approve their request, and their request includes seating. So that's the motion on the floor, or is it amended to accept the Planning Board's recommendation? It's not clear.
Who's the maker of the motion, and they can amend it as they need to? Who?
Well, I was asking clarification from Mr. Rome on what we actually, is this inclusive of the outdoor seating or not?
It is not the intent of the mayor to have that, but clearly, you know, council can make a determination as to what they want to approve, and I would just simply say that as it stands right now, it's not the intent of the mayor's office to do that. If you want to clearly identify that, then that's certainly...
You want to address the concerns of the DIB and those kind of things?
We're certainly going to do that regardless, like I said before, of the next, the action of the council on these next three. So, but I've already been through that, so I'll just...
What's your, did you call a question?
No, I want to know what the, the, the motion is. Are we voting on the Planning Council, or are we voting for this lady's request?
The recommendation is that the City Council approve the request for a license to use a portion of Palafox Right-of-Way adjacent to property located at 321 South Palafox. 321, that's what you're voting for?
Mr. Chair, would you say, you were the maker of the motion, would you add on there either as recommended by the Planning Council, or as requested by the applicant, and that would clear it up for all of us?
No, it won't, because we have two different recommendations of the planning...
Okay, as, with or without seating? Just say, with seating or without seating?
I'm the chair, you do it.
But you made the motion, right?
No, I'm reading it, I was reading what the motion was.
Make a substitute motion. Make a substitute motion.
Yes.
Mr. Townsend, she said you made the motion.
I made the motion.
You did.
I did.
Uh huh.
He was here when I made it, why withdraw my motion?
Okay.
So I need somebody else to make the motion.
In, in the spirit of equitable treatment, I think we were just reminded, we have Bodacious Olive, we have other neighboring property owners, and I feel like it is very important that we are not discriminatory, and I suggest that any language about a motion, that we think about that any and all applicants for license to use currently, that that period be for a, for a 90-day period.
We need a, we need a motion.
Okay, I move that all license-to-use applications be limited to a 90-day period.
That's different than what we started with. We've got to address what was proposed by the mayor. I mean, we've got the, the company that requested this for a license to use, we have to address that.
We need to, we need to address this particular action item.
Okay, I move that this applicant be granted a 90-day license to use for outswinging doors, planters, and tables and chairs.
Second.
Properly move the second, that, you heard it, all in favor?
Aye.
Close it.
Aye.
We, you get the motion passed.
You can't give them 90 days, and then they have to swing their doors the other way.
No.
I had my hand up to speak, but we didn't ask the businessperson if that's acceptable, to make an investment in tables and chairs for a 90-day period. If you'll recognize me, I'd like to speak.
I'm sorry, I didn't see. I'm extremely sorry.
My concern is, and I see that the Planning Board brought up their, the request of the mayor, I don't remember in here what it says, hold on, I don't have my glasses today, so bear with me. That this be reviewed, it's almost like we're retroactively deciding. She made the request based on existing ordinances, on existing practices on Palafox. When the tattoo parlor was an issue, we were trying to go backwards and say, oh, no, we can't have that there. You know, we have ordinances in place for the public nuisance, or for the police, we just changed so they can address open container in certain areas, that we have other enforcement mechanisms, and if we need to make changes, that's fine, but don't penalize this business owner for a perceived and known, possibly both, need that we need to address these license to use. I'm just really concerned that we are, we're taking it out on this one business. Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate Councilwoman Dewis's comments. We have found that we are archaic in our license-to-use language and in our rates. We have a responsibility, if we are going to allow for our public spaces to be used for revenue, the creation of revenue, and the dollar amount on a per-square-foot basis for our areas deserves to be revisited and revisited sooner versus later. I think that this council, I will do my best to show that this is, this is not any sort of punitive action, it's not trying to in any way be a barrier, but on a per-square-foot basis, we, I encourage all of us to catch up with the rest of, of our other municipalities. And for those establishments that don't choose to want to pay an amount to use our right-of-way for merchandising, then that's their choice. But I think earlier, there was a very important clarification, and that was Councilwoman Dewis, that wanted to make sure that the wine world, that their lease footprint was, was the, not a license to use, but was in fact described in the lease, and the license-to-use portion was a much smaller section, and...
It's actually reversed.
We've got, we've got an opportunity, I think, to properly allocate the division of cost depending on, on use. Those sidewalks generate a lot of money for our businesses, and we need to revisit that.
Oh, we finished, finished with that?
My sermon's over, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Rome?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next subject on the agenda is request for transfer of license to use 104 South Palafox. The recommendation is that City Council approve the request to transfer the existing license to use that was previously approved for 104 South Palafox to the business currently operating at this location.
Mr. Pleasure?
I'd like to approve this with a 90-day also. I don't, again, want to single out this prior business, and that will give staff an opportunity to take a look at this issue, and maybe bring us something back within that 90 days.
Second.
Is that going to be for all, you got two here like that, I believe. You want to make that informal motion?
Yes.
Is that the most?
Yes, the, I make a motion to accept the recommendation with the amendment that it will be for a 90-day period.
And it was seconded.
Did I get a second?
I seconded it.
If I move a second...
May I just ask a general question? Do we anticipate the changes to the license to use that are being discussed and debated coming within the next 90 days, or will these poor people have to come again in 90 days for another 90 days until we can get all of that resolved?
We...
Mr. President, we'll have something here. I mean, this, this is a significant issue. DIB has already weighed in on it, they've done a lot of, they've done some work on their own in regards to giving us a blueprint, if you will, so we'll bring something forward.
Thank you. Audience, all in favor?
Just, I'm sorry. I'm going to support the motion, but one thing that does concern me, and I hope the Planning Board and the mayor staff look at, and that is the Federal Highway Administration's Guidelines for Accessible Sidewalks, and putting planters on a sidewalk greatly concerns me, because having objects in a sidewalk can cause problems for people who have visual impairments, so that was just something I wanted to...
Thank you.
...throw out there that concerns me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Rome?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The next item is subject request for transfer of license to use 200 South Palafox. The recommendation is that City Council approve the request to transfer and amend the existing license to use that was previously approved for 200 South Palafox to the new business, World of Beer, that has recently opened at that location.
So moved with the, so moved to approve the recommendation with the same 90-day period.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on.
For the same 90-day period. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Vice President, is subject creating sections 14-TAC 1-TAC 291 through 14-TAC 1-TAC 320 of the City Code, green building ordinance. The recommendation is that City Council adopt an ordinance creating sections 14-TAC 1-TAC 291 through 14-TAC 1-TAC 320 of City Code to encourage sustainable building practices in residential and commercial construction projects.
Mr. Pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move a second. Discussion. Councilwoman Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had one concern about the ordinance. It had a portion where it said that the, the requirement for city-sponsored buildings to be green buildings can be waived by the mayor or his designee. I would think that, in, as happened with the community centers, it, it sort of upset me a little that we approved money for them to be LED, LEED certified, not LED certified, and then, and budget-wise, it couldn't be done that way or something. I don't know why, but I understand now they're not LEED certified, maybe. But I would think that, that changing from that would need to come back to the council, because it is a sort of reallocation of the money. We were, we gave money, planning for a green building, and we are not going to get that, and why are we not getting it? I think that it would be beneficial for it to come back to the council, for the council's approval.
Mr. Rome, do you have comments on that?
I have no comment on that, Mr. Vice President, but Mrs. Bell can certainly give an overview of the particular ordinance that we're proposing.
Any other comments?
As an architect, I am certainly encouraged with the growing knowledge and the prevalence of green building design aware, awareness, the intention of many building owners, developers, certainly now seems to default in the direction of how can I be more environmentally responsible? It is a, it's a social issue, it's no longer confined to the arena of architects and contractors. However, I personally have encountered numerous projects and challenges when the talk that feels so good and seems so achievable, when we are in the conceptual stage of describing how our buildings may be designed to operate more efficiently, the translation hits a, hits a huge barrier, or the transformation to physical reality from that sort of intent hits a huge price barrier when it comes to achieving that pedigree LEED label. And I think it is, I, I think it is an area that deserves tremendous, a tremendous amount of revisiting on the part of our federal government. I think there has now been, and you can certainly talk to other architects and developers who have headed headstrong in the direction of achieving a LEED certification, only to find that the cost to get that label on a building, in fact, can, can be counter, it can counteract, or in fact, take away from some of the more expensive but efficient systems. It, fortunately, there are some other agencies that are beginning to, what I would say, create the safety net, and still while yet encouraging green building practices, however, not requiring quite the expense. And Councilwoman Pratt certainly is, is right that the council and members of the public certainly endorsed moving forward, choosing to get a LEED certification for our two new resource centers. However, I think those resource centers would, and more importantly, those community members that are using them would have suffered greater loss had we not been able to find a, again, a green building methodology, but without having to get to the top level. There's a lot of bureaucracy, a lot of people that have to get paid in the review process from here to Washington, DC, in order to issue those LEED certifications.
Okay, yes.
And I will say that I was actually very pleased to realize that we weren't pursuing LEED. I knew that that had been, the mayor had said, it's his policy to pursue LEED, and I said, I've heard, I've had so many concerns about LEED, that I was very worried, and I'm glad that we are making the policy on doing green building. But I think that your point was that, you know, sometimes you budget in that you're going to spend this much money on this, and then it, it becomes, oh, wait, in order to have gotten this, we needed more, so let's get rid of that. And I think that that's a budgetary decision, that, that there are probably very good reasons for it to be made, but I think it should be made publicly as opposed to just by the mayor, and I think that I would like to see this amended to say, rather than let the mayor unilaterally decide, when the council has budgeted and appropriated for specific uses, to let him then not do it for that specific use, then bring it back to the council, just say, look, in order to get the low-flow toilets, it would have cost us a gazillion dollars, now we're just not putting in toilets, and we would approve it.
If, if I may, Mr. Vice President, you know, to, to, to have to bring back to this body every type of decision that has just been outlined by Councilwoman Pratt, it would simply be unworkable. This body approves budgets for building design when, it shouldn't be like any other, it shouldn't be any different than any other project, and so when, when we have cost overruns, then we rightfully should be here explaining why we have those cost overruns. But there, with any project, there are multiple changes that occur as part of that building process, and to suggest that we have to bring back to council low-flow toilets, with all due respect to this body, that would freeze the ability of, of staff and contractors to get anything done.
May I clarify on the, my point? I, I meant, you know, basically, I understand we would approve, hey, we want to be certified or not certified, and it wouldn't come down to the toilets on our vote, but the certification. And so the mayor would have the discretion to say, low-flow toilets are expensive, so I'll plant some extra trees or something. Some, there is wiggle room, but to move from certification to no certification, I think is a policy decision that should rest with the council.
Yes.
Well, I agree with Dr. Pratt's concern, however, we can always come back and amend, amend the ordinance. I would really like to see us move forward, I think this is a giant leap forward in the right direction. I think having this ordinance will also help... I think having this ordinance will also help us get points with the Green Building, Florida Green Building Coalition. If we hopefully decide to go for a certification from them, for our city, which I think would be a great asset and benefit to this city. So I'm going to support the ordinance as written. We can come back and we may want to amend other things about it, but at least it's a start. And so I'm going to support it. I urge council to support it.
Any other comments?
Can we actually give the presentation so everybody understands what's in the ordinance, Mr. Vice President?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm happy to. It's short, I promise. For the proposed green building ordinance, I'll quickly go over some general information about the ordinance, the purpose and benefits, but it seems like everyone's pretty well-versed in that. The requirements and responsibilities that are outlined in the ordinance, the standards, and then some incentives that the city hopes to offer. This ordinance will be added to Chapter 14, that's the building construction standards. So Bill Weeks of Inspection Services has been very helpful and participated a lot in the writing of this ordinance. One of the things that I'd like to point out is there already is a Florida statute requiring municipalities to comply with the Sustainable Building Rating System. So this is nothing new. It just doesn't specify, and neither does this ordinance, what standard you must meet. It leaves, it leaves it open to LEED or the FGBC or Energy Star, whatever that might be. So we will meet some standard. And the mayor has kind of, he has made this a priority, and you should have seen the memo that he released. And again, this was part of his 20 solutions for 2011. I've also taken this ordinance to the Planning Board where it received unanimous support. I won't go into great detail on the cost benefits of green building. We've already kind of talked about that. But another thing is that it does increase property values for homeowners who do decide to build a sustainable home. I think even more importantly, though, what I hope that this ordinance can accomplish is making us eligible for funding. We're not asking for a lot right off the bat, but you can look at other cities in Florida who have established a green building program and then were able to receive grants. And Tallahassee, for example, used part of their energy conservation block grant, which we used for the library. They funneled some of that money into a green building program where they provided residential homeowners over $2,000 per home for getting green building certification, and that provided money for about 56 homes before they ran out of money. I think we're more competitive once we have this ordinance in place and an established Like pointed out earlier, city participation is required, can be waived, but again, there still are certain state requirements, so we will meet some sort of standard. And I want to make it very clear that private construction participation in this program is voluntary. So no one is being forced to privately build green. This is just incentivizing the program. As I mentioned before, it allows flexibility for who the certifier is. There's a lot of concerns with LEED, and this leaves it very open to other programs for certification. And we do have some LEED-accredited staff members. Derek Owens, the city engineer, as well as Natasha Reynolds at ESP, do have LEED accreditation. This ordinance, right now, I've requested that it go into effect on 1 October. Part of that is because we have requested some funding for the program. That would include a rebate for residential homeowners. So for example, if someone were to get their home LEED certified, they would then bring that certification to the city and get a rebate. And that would be anywhere from about $100 to $300 for a residential homeowner. So we've requested about $3,500 for next year's budget to provide this incentive to homeowners, which, again, isn't enough to probably put someone over the edge and decide to build green. However, I think it's a start and certainly a reward for someone who does do that. For a commercial, who, a commercial business who builds green, we can't afford to pay, that's, you're talking about thousands of dollars for those certifications. But what we would like to do is present an annual green building award by the mayor where we could vote and recognize publicly those who have committed to building green. We'd purchase signs for the construction sites saying, this builder is participating in the City of Pensacola Green Building Program. We've worked with planning to provide parking and density bonuses for those builders, so they would be required less parking spaces, which would be very positive, I think, for the city. And then website and council recognition. So we'd want to get a website up and running where this ordinance and then the procedures would be public, and then on that page, we would recognize the participants as well. The ordinance also requires an annual workshop for both public and staff members, and again, that money is requested in the budget. And that's all I have, unless you have any more questions for me.
Any questions? Thank you so much. Did we have a motion on this? Have we voted? Any more discussion? Audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ruhl?
Mr. Chair, could I interrupt and point out to everyone that I think Jessica has done a great job pulling this together, which has the potential to be a legacy-like product that will outlast all of us. And in case you don't know, I think Jessica is approaching, well, several milestones, two. But one is, as I understand, Mr. Chairman, is her final day with us, it's July 27. And I just want to applaud her involvement, her efforts, and her impact.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And in addition, I want to remind or perhaps inform fellow council members that we should be very diligent and sensitive to the fact that with the loss of Jessica, we need to quickly, I think, find someone with her level of expertise in sustainability practices and her depth of knowledge regarding cutting-edge environmental design. And personally, I have someone in mind, but I'm not the mayor of Pensacola.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. Mr. Ruhl?
Yes, sir. The next item on our agenda is subject award of bid 12 TAC 039, Pensacola International Airport Army Reserve Center Parking Lot. The recommendation is that City Council award a contract to Utility Services Company, Incorporated. The lowest and most responsible bid in the amount of $912,298 for the construction of the Pensacola International Airport Army Reserve Center Parking Lot, plus a 10% contingency. Further, that City Council adopt the attached supplemental budget resolution to provide total funding for the project.
Move to approve.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Move in second. Discussion? Yes, Councilman John?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I was wondering if we went after any grant money for this project? I believe that I was told by a close friend of mine that there's some possibly state and federal grant dollars available for parking at airports.
Ms. Crawford can address that.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, member of the council. Yes, sir, we do have a grant in place. You approved a $950,000 FDOT grant last year that was in anticipation of this project.
Okay, great. Yeah, I was trying to read back through that. Also, do we have the plan, the site, the plans of that parking lot yet, Ms. Crawford?
Yes, the plans have been completed. Engineering, Derek Owens with Engineering, completed those plans for us.
Could you tell me a little bit about it brief, like just one minute? Is it going to be just a surface parking lot, Tree Islands?
It does have Tree Islands. It is a surface lot. We are actually looking at making it one of our economy lots, possibly a credit card in, credit card out. We'll be bringing that back to you. The item that we have to do is, last year, we came very close to reaching capacity with our parking, so it's instrumental that we try to get through with this parking lot before the holiday season this year. And also, if and we are with, when we're able to secure funding for a garage expansion, we would have to have another parking lot so that we could relocate those parkers to another area. So this is all a phased-in that we have to have before we can move forward with our parking.
And approximately, how many spots is it going to have?
I believe, I'm sorry. Yes, it is 465. It would have been a little bit larger, but we are going to be looking at putting a right-hand turn lane onto Francis Taylor.
Right. I just, as you know, I just encourage the Tree Islands, you know, they cut down on the intense heat that asphalt can generate with sun. So I would just appreciate the Tree Islands, as many as we can.
We have, we've taken that in consideration.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 28, Mr. Ruhl?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The next item on the agenda is subject West Florida Public Library Long Range Plan 2013. The recommendation is that City Council adopt the West Florida Public Library's Long Range Updated Plan for 2013.
What's your pleasure? Do I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Everybody, can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the concern agenda items, I'm sorry, the attorney communications, do we have any?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Concern agenda?
We have items three, two, on slash items number six, seven, eight, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19.
Get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Prove move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have, we have a presentation, a red light camera enforcement program. Do we have that?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, thank you very much. Mr. Al Garza will be here to talk to you a little bit about this proposal.
Good evening, council. I'll make it short and sweet. Let's see it. Chris has got it here. Chris is out of the room, but let me just give you the highlights of the proposed red light enforcement program. We plan on going out for an RFP with council's approval to solicit offers from vendors to provide the cameras, similar to what Milton and Guth Bries are doing. Our initial proposal calls for eight cameras, or eight approaches citywide to initiate the program. The initial program period will be for about three years, and the reason for that is that there is a considerable investment in the equipment associated with these type intersections. It's about $50,000 in approach to put these cameras in. It's just not a matter of putting the cameras in and collecting tickets. There's a process that has to be followed with regard to chain of custody on the evidence. There's been a lot of issues lately with regard to the authenticity of the evidence that's being presented. So being able to document that the image taken on the day the event occurred and what's being presented as evidence are identical, that there's no possibility, there's not a third party handling of, somebody could have manipulated the data. In some jurisdictions, elect to manage this information in-house, others tend to use the vendor to process the data. But in all cases, we have to have a member of law enforcement document the evidence. So a potential violation is noted, is processed by, is processed by the vendor, it's sent to the city for concurrence, it's concurred or not concurred by the city, it's sent back, a ticket is issued. We've been working with the police department. They feel like they can handle the verification process with in-house staff. Conservatively, we're looking at a potential revenue to the city of about a half a million dollars.
If I may, Mr. Vice President, there is one issue that has arisen just in the last week, actually, and Mr. Messer can give you a little more clarity on it than I can. But there has arisen a split in the circuits for the state of Florida in regards to whether or not the state has preempted by passage of the, your vehicle code, this particular issue. And as Jim and I talked earlier this afternoon, it may be prudent for us to wait until the Supreme Court ultimately decides this issue before we move forward. But this just came up, was it the sixth, Jim, the decision came down on the sixth? So it is something new that's just.
We're going to wait until we get it read out.
Well, you know, that's one of the things that we have to think about before we move forward.
Councilwoman Dewey?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just had a quick question. These eight sites that we're looking at doing, is that enforcement of 35 mile-per-hour speed limits, are those roadways 35?
Councilwoman Dewey, they're primarily on state roads and major city intersections. It has nothing to do with speed limits. It's just strictly enforcing red light running.
So it's red light, there's no speed enforcement mechanism yet?
Correct.
Reverse of speed enforcement, if you accelerate.
There are those out there.
Yeah.
But this particular program is specifically dealing with the red light issue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
The next item, information item, is FY, Second Quarter Small Business Enterprise Report. That's the information item. Any questions about that? Okay, and the request for condition use approval, Al Fresco, any questions about that? Okay, do we have any council communications? Yes, Ms. Myers, Dewey, and then Councilwoman Wu.
Okay, thank you. We decided earlier in the meeting that we would have an ordinance that, have it on the agenda for the next COW meeting, an ordinance that would apply to all of our boards, commission and authorities regarding women and minority representation. And so I would like for that to be an agenda item for the next COW meeting and ask the city attorney to, if he would draft a proposed ordinance that should be fairly simple since we're going to be using the same language we're using in the parks and recreation board. It would just be a generic ordinance that applies to all of our boards, commission and authorities using the same language.
Is there any problem with that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dewey?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And I'm upset that not everyone is here tonight at this late hour, because I do want to talk about something that I'm concerned about, and has to do with a letter that we all received from Mr. Quint Studer. And it is Quint Studer. We all received it for the memo of understanding and his offer to exercise his option. And the reason I bring it up is that, you know, there was a letter sent by, well, let's go back, the commitment that we made to the citizens and the MOU that was entered into by City Council under the old form of government and ratified eventually by Mr. Al Kobe as the city manager. That's what he is responding to. Since then, there's been a letter sent by Collier Merrill. There was one sent on September 28, 2011, giving 120 days, but no appraisal had been done, or there really wasn't a site plan on parcels and all that for the Maritime Park, because all of that was in flux because of the construction. Since then, an appraisal was done, but came in at a late time, and there was an extension to that request from Collier Merrill to Mr. Studer, allowing Mr. Studer an extra 120 days. Well, with our summer schedule, we're upon. Well, with our summer schedule, we're upon July 24th, 2012, that extension expires. And this is 12 million in economic development, it's, Mr. Studer is quite honestly the last man standing in the equation for private investment at the CMP. The council that approved that took a long step forward with a great deal of risk when we issued that bond. And we've had such great successes with the ballpark over there, but there is another part to that of private investment. We had a long debate earlier about, are we interested in economic development, how do we structure it, and how are we subordinate to other agencies, and this and that? And we have $12 million staring us in the face here, and an investment from Mr. Studer, he's keeping his commitment to the city and to the citizens that he made under this MOU, and I'm just very concerned that we would look terribly uninterested if we didn't at least speak up as a council in support of that or in acceptance of the offer. With Councilman Hall missing and Councilman Gerald's, I don't know if a motion tonight is appropriate, I think it should be all of us if we, we actually take a vote on that, but I do have some questions for Mr. Messer, and it may require follow-up, but there's some confusion for Mr. Studer, who he needs to contact to exercise this. He has responded in writing and exercised his option. The CNPA is an instrumentality of the city, council approves that CNPA. I don't know the, the legalities of it. My question being, the appropriateness of the motion would, would be hinged on this, is if the mayor is making a request or recommendation, and the CNPA as well, as I understand, that would have to be ratified by city council, so I have that question for Mr. Messer at this point, if this MOU, the ratification of it, the acceptance of it, will eventually be approved by us.
Okay, I need to make sure I understand this. Are you, are you talking about a potential lease, or?
The MOU that was entered into between the city...
Yes.
And Mr. Studer and the CNPA, those are the three parties to it. He has issued his wish to exercise that option, in other words, to keep his commitment to the memo of understanding and build the $12 million building on the CMP site. There has been no response to this point of yea or nay, nothing in writing, and this is going to expire, this extension expires July 24th, next week. We will not meet again, I don't know when the CNPA is planning on meeting again, but to simply say nothing, I think, is in poor taste to begin with, but I mean, I'm just trying to get some clarification from you as our attorney, as the citizens' attorney, and also as the mayor's attorney, what, what needs to happen here? No one knows what the process is, no one knows who will eventually have to approve this.
My general understanding, and I'll be glad to take a look at the MOU, is that the CNPA acts as the agent for the council.
But council approves CNPA actions?
Yes.
So we will eventually have to weigh in, and that's my concern is that...
Eventually, but I can't tell you at what stage.
Okay, but if this expires, see, if this expires on July 24th, the wording is, then that in effect is not exercising his option, and he is foregoing his option. So we are basically not responding to an offer of $12 million of personal private investment at the CMP, and that's the commitment that we gave to the citizens when we did this bond, and when we built the, the multi-use stadium, and when we endeavored that whole project. So if I need to wait till Thursday, I'm happy to do that, but you know, that if we make a motion to accept it, if it eventually is coming to us anyway, to let this date go by and not follow the MOU, and not follow the process that was laid out by Mr. Merrill as the CNPA chair, asking Mr. Studer to exercise his option, he's exercised it, but it, it's not being answered, it's not being ratified. So I'm just trying to find out what the process is to be.
Well, I think maybe, I can defer partially to the mayor's office, I mean, I, I don't have any information on that. I presume Ed Spears would have some information, or?
Could we have that before Thursday's meeting, since we don't meet till August as a council?
Yeah, and I mean, maybe I'm being obtuse, but tell me exactly what the question is.
I don't know.
Is the question whether or not there is going to be a, an opportunity for council to vote on whether or not to approve a lease or the terms and conditions?
The larger question is, who is going to accept Mr. Studer's offer to exercise his option? If it is to what was entered into in the MOU, it was the city council is who entered into it, but we've had a change in government. Mr. Merrill, as the CNPA chair, has asked Mr. Studer, given him the 120 days, but because there was not an appraisal and we were not finished next door, an extension was given. The extension expires next week, so we're leaving this $12 million commitment out there laying on the ground, and that's what I'm concerned about. So my question is, who will officially respond to it? If it eventually will be council, then I'd like to make that motion on Thursday.
I mean, I'd be glad to call Mr. Merrill and ask him.
That's, that's a critical question, I'm glad you brought it up, because I'm probably under the impression that Collier Merrill as chair is probably doing the debate and talking back and forth, but I think that clearly it needs to be some delineation regarding what's going to happen, especially in light of the deadline. So I, I would hope that we could get some clear understanding.
And it's specific, actually, Mr. Messer, to give you something to be asking the question about, is section 2.1 of the MOU, and it clearly states, "At any site selected by mutual agreement of Studer and the CNPA."
Thanks for bringing that up.
May I make a statement? There is the ominous omnibus, that was a Freudian slip, that was a slip, the ominous omnibus lease amendment, which clearly says that the CNPA is the agent of the city for purposes of dealing with the private development. So being that they are the agent, I would think that the city council would ultimately have the final approval, I would think. But the CNPA does have a meeting at 1:30 on Wednesday, and so I assume that that's going to be on the agenda, so at least I anticipate that it will be. So I think that we need to, I, I wouldn't want to vote on it tonight, obviously, I want to see what happens at the CNPA on Wednesday. So that's my take on it from...
Inasmuch as we can anticipate some action in this regard, I would hope that our attorney here will respond to those questions and get us some answers, to find out who's role is to do what as a release of this 12 million bucks.
Thank you.
If they want to discuss it, that's fine, but we need to know's role, the mayor's office, the council role, and, and the CNPA's role. But we don't want to be in a position where we don't know, and then possibly with that memorandum of understanding, because he has rights to do this as relates to that memorandum of understanding. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, just wanted to share a couple of things that Councilwoman Dewise brought up. I did ask some of these questions about 10 days ago of Mr. Spears in an email, and I will forward it to Mr. Messer or Erica, who would, who would be the appropriate one? I'd like to share some of those answers with this council, but I want to do it appropriately, so who should I send that response to some of those questions to, to have it disseminated to the rest? Okay, I'll send it to you tomorrow, and then also, maybe it would be, a couple of things, maybe it'd be appropriate if, if Dr. Pratt or I, at the CNPA meeting Wednesday, brings forth the support, I, I'm hearing support for this from this council, and that we, maybe we can mention at that CNPA meeting Wednesday afternoon that we support moving this forward, that getting this off of dead center, that we, we need to move forward with it. I don't know how we could do that in some informal way, but, but I'd be happy to take that sentiment, if that is the majority of the sentiment of this council, I know we have two members not here, but I don't really know how that would, would happen, but I'd be happy to do that, and I, I think that, that I can do that Wednesday. I don't know how we can do that, but, but that's one thing. And the, and the third thing is, I've, I've asked the mayor about a week ago if I could get, or maybe two weeks ago now, if I could get more involved in the negotiation with Mr. Studer, if I could actually take a lead role in that to try to bring this in for a landing, and I want to make that public to this council that I did that, I took it upon myself because I had heard some things going on that I didn't totally agree with and that I wanted to, I think that this is something that we need to move forward on, and so about two weeks ago, give or take, and you'll see where I've actually asked the mayor if I could take a lead role in doing that, to try to, try to get this to happen, so I just want also to say that publicly. But I think I'm hearing that, that the council wants to move forward, and I'll be happy to, to tell the CNPA that Wednesday. Unless somebody has some opposition.
Is that on the CNPA's agenda, do you know?
No, ma'am, I haven't seen that yet, I just checked my emails to see if there was an agenda posted yet, I do not see one. Not yet, I do not see one.
I hate to even mention this after these heavy topics we've been talking about, but I think, when we're going to have a long meeting, I don't think it's reasonable to have us here with no food. At one point, we used to have sandwiches, snacks of some kind, to bring us in here at 3:00 and go to almost 9:00. And I'm, I'm including all of us in this.
And eating crackers.
I don't care if it's crackers, I don't care if it's hot dogs, I think, this is on a different topic, you have moved on.
Oh, sure.
You know, I don't know who to complain to, I don't know who to make the suggestion of, but I, I think it's unreasonable, not only for council, the staff as well. I mean, poor policeman's been here as long as we have, and he hadn't any more to eat than we have, Diane has, we'll charge her, you know, I'm just, but who do I make the request to?
Well, you can make a motion that we start bringing food in again, we do have a budget.
Especially next week with proposed budget.
Yeah, I mean...
I just ate a box of cookies.
I just, I wanted to go back to Councilman Johnson, because you are going to carry that information to, to the CNPA meeting, if you would prefer a motion of support from council for this, would that give it, give you some more comfort to bring it up if it's not on an agenda?
Yeah, that'd be great, and if I could get that actual motion emailed to me, I will read it.
No, I'm saying tonight, if you had a motion from council just in support of accepting Mr. Studer's offer, that that would help CNPA along, or, you know, just to get the ball rolling? Okay, so I make that motion, second.
I'm not going to sit.
Second question?
Okay, I, I think I can comment on this. Certainly, I have to refrain from voting because of my involvement with Mr. Studer in the capacity as an architect, but I do want to share my appreciation for Councilwoman Dewise pointing out there, there is a memorialized date, and just because someone is Mr. Studer, and just because he may have a high popularity index rating, it would be foolhardy and disrespectful to not treat, in my opinion, that individual as though he is someone that just flew in from Anchorage, Alaska, and has put some paperwork in front of this governing body looking for a formal response. He, as I understand, and as you know, we all were provided some very, I mean, the consideration of time allocation and descriptions, and I believe anyone, anyone that desires to conduct business with the city of Pensacola deserves the level of professionalism that this individual has shown us, that's the message.
Absolutely.
So I am not able to vote.
As, as Mr. Reynolds is fond of saying, I know I'll get my neck chopped off for this, but I don't want to, to leave the record barren of any mention, although I don't have specific information, I would be astonished if, you know, Mr. Merrill, who's a fairly astute businessman, you know, isn't pursuing our interests or the interests of the city as the, as his, as, you know, as principal and agent, and again, I'll check up on this, I, I just don't want it to be left that somehow, and again, I, I know I'm fumbling around because I don't have the facts, but I, I just can't imagine that Mr. Merrill's dropped the ball on this.
I don't believe so.
He may, he may not have reported explicitly to this council, but I, I just can't imagine that Mr. Studer's not being handled appropriately.
We aren't suggesting that, you know, the mayor did drop the ball, but I think it's incumbent that, as council, that we acknowledge, and I stay silent, I think too often, as council, we read stuff in the paper and don't know anything about it, and that, that bugs the hell out of me, but I hate to use that kind of language, but I think we all need to just share, so we folks don't be caught cold on what's going on.
I'd like to make a statement if I can, comment on the motion.
Yes.
I'm not going to support the motion, even though I support Mr. Studer's offer for, for this reason, I want to, I, I, I will support letting the CNPA know that we would like for them to consider this, that time is of the essence, and we want this considered on Wednesday, and, and I believe that they're going to anyway.
That's my intention.
But I don't want to jump over their heads and approve it. The people on the CNPA have been there, most of them, for many, many years, they've had a lot of experience with this project and this, these properties, and I do believe that Mr. Merrill, as, as chairman, is not going to let this be endangered in any way. So I, I, I plan to go to the CNPA meeting, and I believe we have two good representatives here on the CNPA, and Councilman Johnson is very involved in the negotiations, and so I think we should let the CNPA know that we support their efforts in bringing this to a successful negotiation.
May I respond, Mr. Chair?
And that's what the motion's about.
Yeah, that's, I'm just supporting that they accept at this point. I mean, if we need to make a motion Thursday to accept the offer based on what CNPA does, we're just giving Councilman Johnson the ability to go forward without a shadow of a doubt that we support them accepting his offer. Okay. That's all, we're not jumping over their head.
Okay, anything else come?
Just need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
The other thing, the other thing about, PC's mentioning about food, yeah, if we need to take it out of my discretionary funds to, to fund some meals for us next week, Mr. Reynolds or whoever, please, please take it, because I, I agree, it's almost 9:00 and I haven't eaten, and so if we could just, these long meetings, if we could have something to eat, I totally agree with Dr. Wu, it'd be great. Unless y'all want to starve us, I mean...
Any kind of request from the mayor's office? Kind of request from the mayor's office?